Good evening. I call the February 5th, 2025 Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Commission. For tonight, we are, per the applicant's request, we are pulling item 5A, the Rockport LLC Mixed Business Campus Comp Plan Amendment. That will be forwarded to a future meeting to be determined later.
Thank you. Commissioners? Can I have an approval?
I recommend approval of the agenda.
Second. Approval made by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Sandall. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So before, I guess, approving that tonight's agenda, if anybody is here in regards to the on-sale liquor text amendment, that has been canceled for tonight. So I'm announcing that the public hearing for the on-sale liquor text amendment has been canceled. The application for this request has been withdrawn. All other public hearings set for tonight's meeting will proceed as shown on the agenda. The next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen requests to have any item separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration. Can I get a motion of approval?
Madam Chair, recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay. Motion carries. That brings us to our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is going to be on mixed-use business campus zoning, and that will be Tim Benetti. So I will now open the public hearing. We will now open the public hearing for agenda item 4A. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the planning department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster in the back, including your name and address, so that accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon the conclusion of the presentation, city staff will ask to comment on the proposal's conformance with pertinence regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. Mr. Benetti.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, before you tonight is actually a city-generated request for a creation of a new mixed-use business campus ordinance or district. This is the public hearing as was announced. I'll go through a very quick presentation, and then you can have the comments right after. That is not working. So, again, we are requesting a consideration of an MUBC mixed-use business campus zoning district. I want to caution tonight, I'm going to be throwing some both zoning terms and land use or comp plan and land guidance terms. I'm going to try to separate those out because I want to make sure we're focused more primarily on the creation of a new district called MUBC, hence mixed-use business campus. So we're going to open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the hearing. Normally, the policy of the planning commission is not to act on the public hearing. However, if you have enough information for tonight, you can or formulate a recommendation to the council if you feel it's warranted. Again, we are requesting this amendment to Chapter 155 of City Code to establish the MUBC. This district will incorporate a mix of permitted, conditional, and accessory uses, along with very specific site area requirements and performance standards. The proposed MUBC zoning district that you have in your packet and that we presented, it currently aligns with the city's 24 comp plan and may be used to rezone areas currently designated as MBC. So we're going to get into that under the 2040 plan and other areas of the city if so requested. Once a comp plan for the community is adopted, zoning districts must be established or amended to achieve those development goals outlined in the 2040 plan. So, we reference this very often. This is the land use plan. This is what we use from a planning perspective to set the bench, you know, basically the table, the benchmark for the future zoning of a community. Some of these areas in color are, represent, single-family, commercial, industrial uses. Some of it may be developed, some of it may not be developed, some of it may vacant, some of it may be built on. Right now, the area in purple is what we refer to as the mixed-business campus, and that's its current designation under our 2040 plan. It's currently zoned mostly sand and gravel. As you'll note, there are some parts in this, what we refer to as the Fisher gravel pit, AVR pit, that were, that does currently have some zoning categories, retail business, institutional, some ag zoning, and some limited business where the current health partners and the Chafin Vet clinics are located. So ideally, this sand and gravel will more than likely turn over into a mixed-use business campus district later on. So, as reported indicated, a good portion of AVR inks, rock port, sand and gravel is currently being, is designated under the MBC mixed-business land use category. This designation is intended to support high-quality business environment for general corporate offices, research and development, light manufacturing office, office showrooms, medical offices, and healthcare. Additionally, the MBC is designation is allowed for a mix of retail and commercial services to support both the business campus and surrounding neighborhoods, primarily along County Road 42. Also, part of the 2040 plan, it stipulated that this district should include certain amount of allocations of certain uses. As noted, 55% to 65% office, 10% to 20% light industrial manufacturing, 10% office warehouse showroom, 5% commercial and retail. Right now, we, that, those percentages are subject to a separate land use amendment or comp plan amendment application, but it doesn't affect this app, this district at this time. The MUBC also aims to build a foundation of different, different uses. We refer to this affectionately as a blob plan. It's just a multi-purpose land designation map, conceptual land use diagram that is part of our 2040 plan. We've referenced it before, and these are the areas that we would like to see, such as commercial retail on the outer, light industrial, other uses in interior, also surrounding it with some retail housing elements and what have you. Again, this is subject to a separate land use application as well. The MUBC district will help facilitate by permitting a variety of uses, including, but not limited to offices, healthcare, hotels, restaurants, bank and financial establishments, office warehouses, various retails. We also have a number of conditional uses, as you probably noticed, certain office developments, daycare centers, light industrial, and we added data centers. We've also added two new definitions for you. So these are going to be two new definitions that will be incorporated into our definition sections, a commercial recreational use, which has been, we've noticed, has become a sort of a popular add-on to some of the communities around us. So we felt that that would be an ideal opportunity to add commercial recreation. You also note the very lengthy definition attributed to a data center. And again, this is just covering basically all the bases of what we feel a data center would entail. This is a map for illustrative purposes only. It only shows what the proposed boundary of the MUBC zoning district would become if this entire MBC-guided area were zoned. But this is not what we're creating. We're not creating the new zoning tonight. We're simply creating a district to be put into our zoning code for others to apply to rezone that property to the mixed-use business campus. The 2040 plan adopted in 2023, excuse me, July 23rd of 2020, provides for that guidance that we just talked about and that clustering of those land percent, the land uses and the percentiles. We have determined that this proposed MUBC ordinance before you. It is consistent with the 2040 plan. That is still in effect, it is consistent. On January 15th, some of you were here that night when the Apple Valley Commission received or reviewed a separate request from Oppenand Rockport, actually Rockport, to amend the 2040 comp plan. That is still in effect or still being considered. The amendment seeks to revise the commercial retail guidance along County Road 42 and also remove reference to that 42 map that we just talked about here. This amendment is indirectly related to separate applications, as we just indicated. Should this amendment be approved, most of the sand and gravel mining areas would remain under the 2040 comp plan MBC land use. Additional amendments to the MUBC ordinance may be necessary to accommodate specific site design standards for the proposed technology park, which you're going to see in a few minutes here. But right now, the current MUBC district aligns with our current 2040 plan, and that can be adopted if you so choose. If the planning commission recommends approval of the comp plan amendment, including those land use guide, guidance changes, the request is always forwarded to the city council. The city council never adopts it. What they do is they simply accept it and make a motion to send it onto the Met Council. That is a required step on any comprehensive plan amendment. Met Council has to weigh in. If the Met Council approves the amendment or has no objections or concerns, it comes back to the city with a recommendation or a written response from them, and then the city council always provides a final review and determination. The council at any time can either refuse to send it on to Met Council, they can send it back to you, or when it comes back to them from Met Council, even if you recommend approval on that land use amendment, and even if the Met Council does, the city council has full authority to either approve or deny that application or that comp plan amendment request. So, even if that requested comp plan amendment is, is not approved, this new MUBC zoning will remain valid and in compliance with the 2040 plan. So, just want to emphasize, you're creating a district, that's it, and it can be used either on this area that's currently guided MBC that we just talked about, that purple area, or it can go somewhere else in the city. It doesn't have to be just the gravel pit area. An example, if, and please don't take this, this is purely example, if the golf course, Apple Valleywood, Valleywood?
Yes.
If, if, if they were to suddenly close up and that became available land, that would be a large enough parcel, so to speak, where an MUBC zoning district could be created. Right now, the only place that we probably could put the MUBC zoning district is in the AVR gravel pit area. Also want to point out, we did make one minor revision in your packet, under page seven, under data center conditions of regs. Number H2, it, you probably have a packet that says, no building shall be located no less than 100 feet. Two double negatives there, so we went, revised it to, and all buildings shall be located no less than 100 feet from any public right-of-way. Slight change, I believe that was the only one that we, we modified after you received your packet. Again, actually requested tonight, policy of PC not to act on an item. However, you can make your final recommendation to the council if you feel enough information is provided. If the planning commission concurs, staff does recommend approval of the proposed ordinance creating this new mixed-use business campus. I'll stand for any question. I also have the ordinance available for any questions or concern. I'll take questions, or I can wait for the public hearing comments if you so choose.
Questions? Tim? Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair. Tim. So essentially, what we're doing is just, like you said, this isn't specifically for the Rockport site in the fact that this is going to be a outline of a set of standards for any larger partial land within the city of Apple Valley, correct?
Correct.
And then we're going to simplify, excuse me, I got a cold, that we're going to simplify the current Rockport site and the fact that we're dealing away with the percentages and the kind of the conceptual outline we had previously, originally with the 2040 plan.
Again, Commissioner Scanlon, members of the commissions, that request is being considered under a separate land use, excuse me, comprehensive plan, land use guidance amendment.
Okay.
The district here that we're creating, it will still be consistent with that current 2040 plan with those allocations, because there is certain language in that current mixed-use business campus that does specify that they have to have retail along 42 and Pilot Knob areas, which is consistent with the current guiding for that area. Later on, if the applicant for the technology park, they need to come in, ask for the rezoning specifically to where they want it on their site with the few amendments to clear out any discrepancies with, and make their new amendment to the MUBC consistent with their land use amendment. If that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Commissioner Mahalold?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Tim.
Yes, sir.
So basically, you know, I know it's maybe echoing Commissioner Scanlon, but kind of for point of clarification, it's, we're looking at a potential land use designation, a land use classification. And so it, it would come into effect, say, for example, Valleywood becomes available, this is a parcel of land that could be designated as a mixed-use business campus. In the context of one of the, the, the area that's the focus of a, of an application tonight, you have, you're basically converting what is a sand and gravel land use designation to something that can be opened and made available for development, including all of the uses that are set forth in Section 155.310B.
Correct.
So it's just basically taking land that's currently designate, whatever the designation currently is, but you're, you're opening it up for the potential development of all of the potential uses identified in the, in the statute.
Correct. So Commissioner Mahalold, if you look, if you look at your screens or up on the, up on the back screen, we currently have a, a current guiding for that, that gravel pit area. I'm just going to call it the gravel pit area, just for simplicity. So that purple area that you see, that's mixed-business campus. That's, that's what we establish as the underlying land use. Right now, most of that property, as I mentioned, is, is the SG is sand and gravel. That's the current zoning. That's, that's part of our, our code. The intent is to turn that basically into a new mixed-use business campus if, if it's applied for, and ask for a rezoning from sand and gravel to an MUBC. Because the underlying is still all MUBC, if they were to rezone, let's just say, the east half of that Johnny Cake 155th Pilot Knob, that northeast quadrant, that would be an acceptable rezoning because it meets the, the underlying land use of MBC. So you have land use rezoning, they just have to be consistent with each other. Right now, sand and gravel would not allow for any type of commercial recreational use. It's just sand and gravel mining operations.
And kind of a follow-up question. This, this is the type of designation and a change in amendment that happens when a gravel pit has sort of reached the end of its useful life as a, as a sand and gravel pit. Now you're trying to make it open for reclamation and development.
Yes. The, the intent is after, and the owners of, of AVR Rockport, I mean, their intent was after they're done mining the gravel and sand, whatever they need out there, they've been slowly reclaiming the areas back. And you'll note, most of the area of mining is now happening on the west side. The east side is pretty well reclaimed out. It could have done more, but it, it doesn't need it right now. But that's typically what happens on, on areas where, when you see gravel pits being reclaimed, they get turned over into a potential development site. And this was clearly identified under our 2040 plan, I think even before 2040, as an ideal area for, or an opportunity for this type of development, which is a mixed use of commercial, industrial, retail, office, healthcare.
Certainly. And I'm sorry, just one more follow-up question. As opposed to other areas which have been developed for residential use, for example, or multifamily housing, you know, a mix of multifamily, single-family. So this is just focusing this particular, as, if, if that type of area, sand and gravel mine, is going to be designated for more commercial purposes, the mixed-use business purpose?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
City Attorney would like to speak?
Just for clarification, I just want, so we're not, for this item, right now, we're not talking about rezoning the sand and gravel.
100%.
So it's, it's just merely creating a zoning district like retail business, general business. So we're just creating it, putting it in our zoning code so it is consistent with the comp guide, which is merely a guiding document.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
So if there are any residents who would like to speak at this public hearing, please come to the podium to speak and address all comments and questions to the chair. Please give your name and your address. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Diaz. I live at 169 Streasi Lane here in Apple Valley. I would like to ask that the definition of a data center be revised under this mixed-use business campus plan. That data centers can be all sizes. They're built at hyperscale these days. I'd like to see that amended to max those data centers out at 400 square foot in footprint, if, if I may.
Okay. We will make note of that. Thank you. Sorry, I should have given the applicant a chance to speak first, right?
Pardon me?
I should have given you a chance to speak first. I'm sorry.
However you want to handle this, fine with me. Good morning, good afternoon, or good evening, actually. Planet Commissioner and Chair. My name is Matt Duffy. I represent Rockport LLC. I want to clarify a couple of things on the record. Rockport LLC owns the, the land that is currently the gravel pit. AVR Inc. has been sold. It is no longer AVR Inc. It is a AVR, I believe, LLC. That is now a tenant to the property. The businesses were sold to Macamar Contracting last year, about 18 months ago or so. So just for clarification, Rockport is the land owner that this will impact. Currently, there is no other large tract of land in the city that the mixed-use business campus would apply to. Theoretically, I guess, it could apply to the golf course. I don't think the golf course is going anywhere, anywhere soon, so I suspect that for the time being, this will only apply to Rockport's property. There's a lot of concerns with this. We tabled our comprehensive guide plan amendment based on some conversations with the city, based on some representations, and also based on some coordination with the second part of your agenda tonight. My client, as it's drafted right now, is not in favor of the mixed-use business campus ordinance. That is the reason for its amendment to the comprehensive guide plan. We talked about this, I believe, at the last meeting on January 15th. There's a whole slew of reasons for it. The blob plan, as it's recalled, if you'll notice the date on the bottom, that is August 2017. That is when that was created. It was created as a discussion point for a then-national developer who was interested in the property. From a theoretical standpoint, could they make it work? From a logistical standpoint, from an ROI standpoint, that, that developer walked away. So that blob plan has never been part of Rockport's portfolio or a discussion about whether they were going to develop it that way. But the date itself, from August 2017, that's eight years ago. That's a, that's a millennia ago, considering COVID hit and basically altered the real estate market in many ways. So that's one of the reasons why we're asking for the comprehensive guide plan amendment. We submitted our study, the executive summary, to the Maxfield Research Study. Maxfield does this type of research all over the, all over the region. I mean, this is not their only area, but Rockport commissions it occasionally to update it, to make sure that we are marketing our property in the manner that needs to be marketed. We're marketing to the right people. We're trying to get the right mix of uses here in the city. We're trying to do a development and enhance the developments that already have existed down and around that area. I mean, if you look at where the loans and buyer leases and all of that development, that was a Rockport HJ development, EpiD's development. So Rockport is infinitely aware of the fact that there's a lot of property that they still own. They're also mindful that they're working with very reputable developers, you'll hear from another one in a moment, to develop their property in a manner consistent with what we think the city wants. We are in regular contact, if not communication, with city staff, trying to vet out various potential users. Several have come, several have gone. Several large users that were interested in the property have walked away, mainly due to barriers of entry, getting in here, and pursuit costs related to that, which is the reason why we've approached the city about revisions to this ordinance, about amendments to the comp guide plan, because we are trying to keep this property marketable. We are trying to provide a development and development opportunities the city will be proud of, and to help your, make your job a lot easier by bringing things that we know that the city wants and will ultimately approve. So, for the record, again, Rockport is not in favor of the draft ordinance without the amendments it's requesting. I just want to be on record with that. I'm happy to answer questions. There was a couple of questions that were asked. And I didn't read my notes. The useful life of the pit, as of right now, we don't publicly disclose that information. The mining is basically consolidated the west side of the pit currently. There's a wall that they are, they are actively mining and will continue to actively mine the property on that side of the pit, absent some offer to Rockport that blows them out of the water, will likely continue past 2030, which will then also ensnare the 2050 comprehensive guide plan process. So, we understand that you have a tough job. We understand, we respect the fact that you have a very difficult job to, to kind of vet through all these things and make sure that the city is well-represented and, and the things that come into your city are very well-thought-through and, and mesh well with the things that you currently have here. And we certainly understand that process. But we are actively working with the city right now, trying to make this ordinance work for us, make it work for you, and make, that starts with the comprehensive guide plan amendments that we are trying to get through. So, appreciate your time. Thank you. Happy to answer questions, happy to, comments, anything else.
Any additional questions from the last meeting floor, Mr. Duffy? I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you. Back to the public, anyone?
Hi.
Hello.
Glenn Beirline. I'm on 12450 Grayton Trail. It's a new senior co-op, and I'd be really disappointed if the Valleywood Golf Course went down. Got a lot of questions here. First, the question is, the water usage. There is a, were the aquifers in?
So that's getting before, that's the next hearing? This is just, we haven't reached that point yet.
Okay, so I'm ahead of myself.
You're ahead of yourself here.
Let's see, okay. I guess the, the one concern right now that I think is appropriate is the fact that everything is, all of a sudden, it was not, data centers weren't in, and now you're, you're, you're saying? is, all of a sudden, it was not, data centers weren't in, and now you're saying, okay, data centers are in. And I guess, one of my concerns is, what are we going to, as a taxpayer, what am I going to get out of having a data center there? What value is it to me?
That again, will be on the second...
That's the second item, too?
Correct. That data center is not about this.
I'll be back.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Tess Fitzgerald. Excuse me, I live at 5899 156th Way in Apple Valley. My property windows would look out to that area that they're talking about. And so I guess, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what this hearing is exactly about, but I just wanted to voice my concern over having a data center there at all. When I moved in, I was told that it was going to be housing, and that's what it was being zoned for. And I'm really not very keen on the idea of having a data center. My concerns are about pollution that it may cause, and not knowing a lot about it, but my understanding is that there's diesel pollution, and there's things like that.
This again would be the next one?
The next one, and the noise pollution, right? Okay. So, I guess I better be prepared for the next one then.
Be prepared with me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in regards to this public hearing? Okay? If not, do you have a question?
Madam Chair, I just have a question for Tim.
Commissioner Scanlon has a question for you, Tim.
That, with this request, and if there's still some discussion going on with the land action, the 5A that was pulled tonight, should we be holding off on this until there's some synergy taking place there, so that we don't have to go do amendments? And I guess, Sharon, they're totally independent of each other.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, they're totally independent. We have a comp guide. State law requires the city to have their zoning code consistent with the comp guide, so we have to have a zoning provision that creates the zoning district. Again, we're not zoning that, the sand and gravel area. It's just creating the district. And if the comp guide goes through and is approved, then we will have to amend the code. So right now, it's, and once this ordinance is in effect, if and when it's in effect, that will guide any mixed business for any land that seeks to be rezoned to mixed business.
Thank you for your clarification, Chair.
Everybody understand, okay? Any other questions for Tim? Okay, if not, if there are no further comments, I will close this public hearing. It is the policy of the Planning Commission not to act on an item on the same night as its public hearing. The Planning Commission will weigh all comments and information received tonight in its deliberations at future meetings. This item will continue to appear on future Planning Commission agenda until a recommendation on the petition can be forwarded to the city council, unless there is a Commissioner who would like to make a motion tonight.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 155 by adding new Section 155.310 entitled "Mixed-Use Business Campus District," M U B C, and adding definitions in Section 155.003.
Second.
Okay. The motion was bade by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Halas. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disapproved, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. So we have one more public hearing tonight. We will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 4B. The affidavit of publication for the notice of public hearing is available for inspection in the Planning Department. Everyone wishing to speak at this public hearing should be sure to fill out the attendance roster. Include your name and your address, so that accurate records can be maintained. We will begin the procedure with a brief presentation by city staff, followed by a presentation by the petitioner of the hearing. Upon that conclusion of the presentation, city staff will be asked to comment on their proposal's conformance with pertinent regulations and policies. After that, comments will be taken from the general public. Mr. Alex Sharp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the first couple of pieces I'm going to start with is just kind of how I'm going to move through this a little bit procedurally. First of all, property owners within 350 feet of the subject property were notified in accordance with state statute. The applicant also notified properties within a wider radius for a public open house. That if the commission has questions to them about the comments made at that public house, I would encourage them to ask them directly of the applicant. I'm also deviating slightly from what we have typically done. Normally, I would go into what the requested action is immediately, but with this one, I want to make sure that I go through what process is required as this application were to move forward, since that is where a lot of questions are going to come in. So there's a regiding that needs to occur, and that is, that application that was on the agenda further down, to be able to change some of the guiding to allow this site plan and this proposal to proceed. So again, I want to emphasize that if, unless that regiding were to be approved, this application could not proceed as presented currently. The site plan would not be in compliance with the current comprehensive plan, and therefore, the ordinance that the commission just recommended. So, moving on, then preliminary plat, that is being reviewed this evening, rezoning of the property to the M U B C ordinance that would require the amendment that we had noted previously, if those comprehensive plan amendments were to be approved by the city council, again contingent upon. That's that full adoption of the M U B C ordinance that would also need to occur, and the publication of that ordinance, so there is some time and pieces there. Additionally, within that M U B C ordinance, currently, the draft includes and would continue to include the conditional use permit for the data center, which is being proposed. We have been advised by our attorney that, due to that district not yet being in existence, that a conditional use permit would need to be applied for in the future. So additional public hearing would come forward. That has been conveyed to the applicant. This application did come in with a conditional use permit, so we will go through some of those details, so that we are able to begin that discussion now, and continue being able to explain that through the process. The final, one of the final items is that site plan building permit authorization, which of course is then contingent upon. And then the standard process, once all of those actions are done, preliminary plat, rezoning, conditional use permit, site plan, that are often recommended by this body concurrently and reviewed by the city council concurrently, then a final plat and development agreement will come forward. All of that, again, is contingent. And I'm stressing that multiple times for a reason. The final plat and development agreement are an item that occur at the very end of a process. It is not the inevitable piece, just noting what that entire process would be, and outlining that from the very beginning. For the public, both present in the room and those watching at home, the way that Apple Valley has done public hearings for a number of years is unless we, unless the city has viewed the item as extremely non-controversial, something like the item that you just previously saw that creates a zoning district that is in compliance with our current comprehensive plan, it is the policy of the Planning Commission to not take action on the item of the public hearing. Staff is not recommending that the Planning Commission take action at this time. We are looking to take the public testimony, receive those comments, and then at a later date, be able to provide some additional answers to those comments. What this allows us to do, and one of the biggest benefits and the things that I'm most proud of with here, is that that allows staff, the applicant, the commission, and any other parties potentially involved, to be able to formulate complete answers, rather than responding at a podium, or being able to not able being able to respond, and then seeking action on an item. So, wanted to put that emphasis before I get just about anything going. Getting into the more standard part of the presentation, one piece that I will note, I'm going to be showing you a lot of maps and diagrams. There will oftentimes be slides that follow this with some bullet point lists. Some of that is just to keep me on task. Some of that is also to ensure that all of that stays as part of the public record. So you will see some redundancies from the things that I remember to say, or that I better emphasize, as I'm going through some of the aerials, photo, I'm sorry, not photometric plans, elevations, maps, et cetera. You will see areas that I'm emphasizing, there will be points on those slides that I may not go through unless you have additional questions or comments. Or, they're there, so that I'm able to go back if members of the public have questions or comments, based upon some of those items. The most thorough portion of this will be the staff report. I do not want to summarize a six-and-a-half-page staff report before you this evening. I'd rather stay on the high-level pieces and go into those details that I need to. I did not mean to hit that mouse wheel, apologies. So this site is located at the southwest corner of Pilot Knob Road and 150th Street, County Road 42. It encompasses a significant area of around that 134, 133 acres area, so it is one of the larger developments within the community. It is everything east of the future Johnny Cake, north of the 155th. It is guided for the mixed-business campus. The mixed-business campus, as you just saw, is a overarching comprehensive guide plan that was adopted, actually, as part of the mixed-business campus, is far back and was discussed in the 2020 comp plan. So this has been around for some time in discussions, formally created as part of the 2030 comp plan, and further refined as part of the 2040 comp plan. So the city has mentioned this type of district for 30 years, minimum, just to give a piece of perspective. The application that was withdrawn from the agenda from this evening was to change just the area that I am attempting to highlight here. That was that Area C. The reason why I'm highlighting that as part of this is because this application would need that Area C to allow light industrial users in order to proceed. The site is zoned sand and gravel, does include a few small ag parcels, and then you'll actually see that staff is suggesting that perhaps, as we move through, that it involves some institutional parcels, just to, if things are moving forward accordingly with the project, we may be able to get some efficiencies. But I'll get into that as part of the plat. This is the official plat that has been submitted to the city of Apple Valley. There are a couple of items that I'm going to go into it. You'll see a slide right after this, it goes through a lot of details, so I'll stay kind of high-level here. But some of the biggest pieces right now, and you'll see this when we're coming forward with the site plan, is that it's not quite consistent with the site plan at this time. There's some different lot configurations that could be coming out of it. For instance, we have suggested to staff that perhaps if this is going to be a substation expansion, that you combine it with the existing, rather than having two lots next to each other, requiring easements in between and setbacks and greater difficulty, we might be able to find efficiency of land use with that. The formal creation of a potential commercial lot here in the corner, there's a number of items. But, one of the key things that this, at least has shown staff, is that there's likely proposed a phasing plan for the technology park development. This is set up to be in four different lots, and two outlots currently, with Outlot B all being a stormwater pond. The city is looking for that to be dedicated in a complete drainage utility easement if the plat were to move forward. Let's see. One of the other larger items that I did want to note, if this development or proposal were to move forward, due to the secure nature of its site, the city is not looking for the interior drainage and utility easements that we typically would be. So, around the establishment of any new site, say if we were to create a commercial parcel here, we would look for 10-foot drainage utility easements around all property lines that abut public right-of-way, and then for interior, where it touches another property, we would look for five feet. In the case of this instance, with these four lots and any potential future lots, due to that secure nature of not being able to get into the site, there's really no need for those interior five-foot drainage utility easements. We would just look for those around the perimeter of the site for things like your gas, fiber, standard utilities that we do around any other site. And then, yes, I should go back, actually, I've got a slide here that'll help me with this piece. I've already kind of hit on a couple of these pieces with the efficiencies we could hit. With substations, we could hit the creation of the commercial lot. But one of the primary items of staff's focus is going to be the dedication of right-of-way to create Johnny Cake Ridge Road and 155th Street. This plat currently only shows half right-of-ways for those. We're working with the applicant, and if the proposal were to move forward, would seek to dedicate those at this time, as the development is contingent upon those roadways for future So one of the items that I wanted to pause on this with, just as a brief introduction, is the scale of this development, the 160-plus acres, comes, or brings with it something that I want to make sure the commission and the public are aware of. My staff report goes through things pretty extensively. These slides are going to go through things pretty extensively. However, the commission just saw McDonald's recently on 115. McDonald's had a sketch plan brought forward, a number of iterations with staff, and that was a 1.5-acre lot. And then you take a 1 point, and they had, you know, two pages of corrections and conditions, very standard at this point in the process, for there to be things that need to be corrected. And now take that scale of acre and a half lot, and take that out to 164 acres. So, there are no, the use aside, the correction staff is suggesting within the site plan, the elevations, et cetera, are not out of line with where the commission might be at at a public hearing for another project, particularly one of this scale. So, wanted to start with that, because it does look like there's a lot of issues. There are going to inherently be that when you're developing this much space. With that, I'm going to start getting into some of those pieces. First, I'll describe just kind of how general access to the site is proposed. So the primary access to the site is sought off of English Avenue, where they will then go into a security building area before they could enter the site. A secondary access is provided off 152nd Street West. That access would be for truck traffic, largely, perhaps, single semi or box truck. Not a lot of vehicles, not a lot of screening required for something like that. In fact, the building seeks to screen the site, and does not allow those vehicles doing the deliveries further into the site. Those deliveries, if I can find my mouse, those deliveries will actually occur from a vehicle that's already occurring within the site, and then be distributed to the individual buildings. So this is where they will, I believe they call it building, or technology assembly building, in some of our diagrams. The applicant could better answer what that actual activity in there will be, but it is a secure site where those materials may be dropped off, and then materials for, within the building, could then be assembled and delivered onsite to other areas. Staff is seeking additional information on the generators. Anywhere you notice these hashed locations, those are gravel beds. We are looking for additional information on how many generators are onsite. That is a key item that staff noted in our staff report, and we've spoken with the applicant about relatively early on in the process. There is approximately 7,9232 square feet of data center building. That is footprint at this time. There is the potential on the buildings that are up in this location, this one here and this one here, that they state that they are two-story. I will have additional comments on the two-story aspect of that a little bit later, but that could mean that they are a complete second floor, and we should be doubling their square footage, or it could mean that there's a refinement, it's only half, and staff does need that additional detail, as park dedication is based upon the square footage, and therefore, it is an important factor in how we are determining the nexus between our fees and their site. So that will be a detail that's needed. I would clarify, we don't need interior, set interior plans on where every piece of equipment will go. We just require knowing how many square feet is in that area to know whether it's actually two-level building, or whether it is a mezzanine and smaller, or any other clarification. We then have 65,928... We then have 65,928, again, approximate, that can change as the site plans are fluctuated, in what I will call ancillary buildings. These are things like the water plant here, the security building here, and this technology assembly building here that add together for a total of 860,000 square feet of floor area. So this is, I'm sorry, of footprint. Again, that could increase to that million that I've put into the public hearing notice, specifically to go to the largest that we could have in that public hearing notice. And then for footprint, we just know we need additional clarification on that actual square footage as we proceed. This site plan is what started really allowing us to see where we could start seeing some of that efficiency that I spoke to with the substations. So we could potentially combine that into a single lot through the preliminary plat and final plat process and therefore not require easements in between that would require, of course, city access to and all of that. We could allow for a little bit better screening because we traditionally don't allow landscaping within an easement. So staff has really encouraged them to work with Great River Energy, the owner of that property, to see if we, if a second substation is a requirement for this project to proceed and the project is proceeding. Again, a number of caveats, that that could be a way of achieving some efficiency. Additionally, that site plan here commercially. One of the other key items out of this that I wanted to highlight is, and you'll see some of this in some of the ordinance, draft ordinance language that was actually included in your prior item. There is a number of items related to the massing and breaking up massing of buildings within that ordinance to ensure that long spans of single building are not a commonplace. We, we could use a little bit of a, perhaps either a separate site plan entirely or a diagram that is, allows us to determine just on some of the screen walls, particularly those that are going to be highly visible, particularly along 42 or along Pilot Knob or very visible on the west sides of the site, just what size of distance are we actually working with here? And then how tall are those so that we get an idea of whether it's a single mass of a single type of material? At this time, we aren't able to determine that, and so we're looking for that additional information, particularly since that draft ordinance includes that type of language. Going into the grading plan, there are a couple of items that's, or a couple of areas where staff would look for additional grading. These have actually been conveyed to the applicant and I believe that we will be able to work together to achieve some of this. So we've looked for a similar berm to be installed along County Road 42. As there is no berm there shown right now, it's a steep hill down, but it is not a berm that's being shown, and so we might look for emassing so that you weren't immediately adjacent to the site on 42, along a new trail, and looking down a pretty significant hill to a fence. Additionally, you will notice, and I've got some photos of this stuff later too, to help the commission just kind of imagine. The berm stops in this location along that building. Immediately adjacent, or I shouldn't say adjacent, immediately across Pilot Knob are single-family homes looking at this side. This would be where we would really encourage birmingham to occur. Additionally, that building by the draft ordinance would need to be 100 feet away from the property line, and it's right now shown at 84. So there's room to add that birmingham back in. You'll actually see in a photo later that some of that birmingham has kind of collapsed in on itself already, so that may be why some of this is shown there. But staff has encouraged that if this plan were to move forward, that that birmingham be created. Along the south side where the grades are going to be the least, one of the things that some of the photos will help me emphasize, but that I wanted to hit here during the grading plan is there isn't significant birmingham set to be along the south side. And some of that is deliberate in that this is a pretty significant distance. One of the diagrams we've asked the applicant to provide is perhaps shadow in the Health Partners Building, and you can kind of see here, it's almost halfway through the Health Partners Building from 155th. So you're going a significant distance up English Avenue before one of these data center buildings could be in a location. So that's much closer than you are seeing in the other property lines, and you don't have the ponding and landscaping, et cetera, that would be between it. Additionally, this is downhill and therefore it will be a little bit more difficult to be able to provide some of that. So that's why it makes sense that this additional distance thing is there. As I'm reminding myself, I actually want to go back to one item. You'll notice the site is secured with fencing all the way around it. This is a double-layer fence. Staff is looking for a diagram that shows the distance between that fence so that we can get an idea of just what that looks like. I'll go into elevations and materials later, but we are looking for some additional fencing details as well. I'm going to go through these relatively quickly because like I said, I've hit on most of this. I'm not seeing, so internal lot lines, we're needing to see things of that nature. We're wanting to be able to show the distance from residential homes. That way we can assure the public across the street where the distances are at. You'll even see some photos that I took later on that. The generators, I already touched on. We're looking for building coverage of impervious surface, not just by the entire lot, but by individual lots as they will be separate properties. That building B, which is that technology assembly building, the 100-foot Pilot Knob versus the 84. I've already mentioned the screen walls. There are a number of smaller buildings on this site plan that I don't know if they're counted towards the overall square footages or not. We're looking for some clarification, also looking for building materials of those as some of them are closer to property lines, and so we want to make sure. And then I've already spoke about the berms and other items. In terms of parking, I can go back to the site plan for this one, so I'm going to stay high level with that, but it did help remind me. So there are 351 stalls shown on this site. It is relatively heavy for a site that we've been told will have not a ton of employment. We've, the most recent narrative did say there could be up to 200 jobs created out of this. We are looking for some additional clarification on that. You'll note that, I've actually got that on a later slide as well. But the number of people on the site at any one time could be significantly smaller than that. And if we're going to have a use such as this, staff has been supportive of instead of large tracts of impervious surface converting that area to proof of parking and green space so that we've at least got more green space, more ability for water infiltration than what we might have if this site had developed, say, into a large office park. Seeking to find some of the benefits that we could have from an application like this, that would be a significant one, as it would allow for a significant amount of rainwater to infiltrate directly into the ground. As the name of the district implies, it being sand and gravel, water infiltrates pretty well here. So we're wanting to make sure that that is set up and that the vegetation itself could help support that where this application moves forward. We've got provisions in code for that reduction, not only in the proof of parking, but in that draft ordinance that you just reviewed, also included with a traffic study and a parking study, that the commission and city council can reduce the overall parking required instead of going with a standard industrial-type use for something like this and creating a huge swath of parking that would never otherwise be used. With that, my counterpart Evan will be taking over briefly. He's going to go into our sanitary and water usage. I will pick back up at the landscape plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Plan Commission members. Thanks for the opportunity to stand in front of you for the, for the first time, I will add. I'd like to start by briefly mentioning that both the city and our consultant engineer, as well as our natural resources department, provided detailed memos about the civil site drawings that were submitted as part of this application, as well as the stormwater modeling. And like Alex mentioned, it's a pretty lengthy memo, so that's included in your packet. And I think I'd like to keep, I was allowed five slides, so I'd like to keep that, you know, pertaining to sanitary sewer and water usage with the context of the city's maximum day demand. You know, so within a context of the water usage is directly controlled by our water treatment plant. So just to start with, with reading right off the city's 2040 comp plan, water utility chapter. So the City of Apple Valley is committed to delivering safe, clean drinking water to the community in a water system that will meet the needed demand and supply water for fire suppression. The city routinely updates its water supply plan, water rates, and capital improvement plan to ensure that the plans are current, relevant, and effective to meet the city's needs into the future. The plan serves as the guide for construction, operation, and maintenance of the municipal water system. Just thought it'd be important to start with that excerpt. So what does that mean and what can we ascertain from that? So the city has 20 wells that supply water, you know, with five of those wells being reserved for emergency use. If we look at our total well capacity, that's all of our active wells, so including emergency, that's 35 million gallons a day, and you'll see the MGD quite a few times here. But if we look at what our firm well capacity is, and that just takes our, our emergency wells offline, because obviously we need a factor of safety to operate within the comp plan with that statement that I, I had up on the screen before there. So our firm well capacity, which is kind of what we can provide on a daily basis, is 26 million gallons per day. Our current maximum day demand, which is abbreviated as MDD, you also see that one. So our current maximum day demand is 15 and a half million gallons a day. That's the usage typically during the peak months that the city is, is currently outputting. Our 2040 comprehensive plan projects that our maximum day demand will be 19.1 million gallons per day. And then, you know, within the comp plan, it also predicted or projected our population at that time. Also note that our water treatment plant capacity has capacity to treat iron and manganese at 18 million gallons a day. That'll come up partially again at the, at the end of my slides, but I think one of the, one of the big takeaways here maybe for, for the planning commission, for the people here and the people watching at home, you know, if we're following our 2040 comprehensive plan, I'll just read another excerpt. "To meet the needs of the system, firm well capacity should equal or exceed the maximum day demand, MDD, in accordance with the American Water Works Association recommendations." So when we review water usage, that firm well capacity, so assuming that we're not using or tapping into our emergency wells, needs to meet that projected use or that proposed use. So up on the screen, we just have, you know, one of many maps that the city has, has been working with our consultant engineer to model on both sanitary sewer and water usage for, for both the proposed technology park, but also for the future development west of Johnny Cake. So when we look at this, we kind of look at this wholesale from a modeling standpoint. So, so just to touch on the sanitary sewer usage from the technology park, a portion of the sanitary sewer will flow out English Avenue, which is kind of, I can highlight, which is the southeast kind of portion of the site. So a portion of the sanitary will flow out this way with another portion that needs to go to Johnny Cake Ridge Road, future Johnny Cake Ridge Road, that is. Now, the proposed use or the proposed flow from that sanitary sewer from the technology park is less than what we would expect that development, you know, without a technology park to output. So staff generally is acceptable or medable to the sanitary sewer usage that the applicant is, is providing here. So for, for a water standpoint or a water supply standpoint, this area is, is proposing to use one and a half million gallons per day on a peak flow. So on, on any given hot day, we could draw up to one and a half million gallons per day. So the city, when we talk about the comp plan and all of those goals, you know, you could see that we're aligned in supplying water for the community. And so providing or, or transmitting one and a half million gallons a day to this site is certainly possible. So we certainly set up our infrastructure to be able to transmit a, a serious amount of water to this area because that's, that's generally an air, a part of town that we expected to use a fair amount of water. However, this specific request, when we look at the supply side or the treatment plant side, there's, there's a projected issue with the treatment plant side that we'll have to work with the applicant to, to mitigate, and mitigate is a term that, that they and I will, the applicant and the city will use when referencing water use. So I just, we put together a table here. Now this, the numbers on this table, if I go back a slide, nope, can't figure that one out. So if I go back a slide, the number on the table here represent everything shaded there, so the, the whole development if it were. Our first row represents the comprehensive plan, so the projected value or the projected sanitary sewer and water usage for that area. That was projected as part of the 2040 comp plan. Now in the second row, what we've done is through the analysis that we've, we've gone through with our consultant, we've put together models and stuff and such, and we've come up with 2.17 million gallons maximum day demand from a technology park. And what you're seeing in the, in that second column is a 1 million gallon per day difference or delta of the water usage. I'll just briefly touch on the fact, on the sanitary side for the same, for the same row there, we're within, we're within an acceptable range, so the .15 is, is a negligible difference from our current comp plan use. The last, the last row, fully developed without technology park, that's just putting modeling to the original comp plan numbers. So you can see that when this was set up for the 2040 comp plan, that they actually, they did a, they did a really good job and were pretty much spot on with, with that comp plan being accurate to projected uses for this land area. Okay, and so this is for my, for my last slide. So what, what does this mean, right? That's kind of the, the big question. I'm sure a handful of people here are interested to know what that means as well. So this project is proposing to use a one and a half million, one and a half million gallons per day maximum day demand for the technology campus. So what, what we would state to that and what we have said to the applicant is that they need to reduce their water demand such that we don't have a projected issue at the water treatment plant, because again, the transmission of water or getting water through the city, we are, we are capable and we have been set up to do that. It's the, it's the supply side. And then the other option would be provide additional treatment plant mitigation. So reduce water demand or provide additional treatment plant mitigation. So when we look at our water treatment plant, future upgrades, you know, we'll have to deal with things like PFOS or iron and manganese, and that 2040 comp plan is currently being studied, or the maximum daily demand is currently being studied from a PFOS and iron and manganese standpoint. And I do believe a slide got missed. No. Perfect. So that is, that is the end of my slides. So I believe I'll go over to Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. I'm going to jump back into landscape plan. I assume that there may end up being some questions on water usage and things later on as the commission goes through. Some of those high-level questions we will want to answer. However, just want to stress that additional questions we are looking to try to take as part of this public hearing so that we can accurately respond to each one of them. So likely members of the public will have questions. Even the commissioners may have questions that we would like to provide that additional study and drafted response so that we're able to best answer that question rather than try to answer something on the fly. It's one of my key items of being proud of how we've done this with the City of Apple Valley, because we do not push an item through until we are ready to answer those questions. Turning to the landscape plan, the applicant's narrative does a pretty good job of highlighting how robust the landscape, landscape plan is, and they are accurate in that. We are looking for additional species, we're looking for counts, we're looking for the one and a half percent means construction value, the building calculations. There are a number of items that need to occur as part of this review. That is a exceedingly common aspect that we find with site plans when the planning commission is reviewing them. I can't list one of them that hasn't needed to have some landscape updates as we've gone through. There are a couple of items that I want to highlight on this plan in particular for the applicant to take note of. They've actually had some of that in some early discussions and are likely updating some of those plans, but want to make sure that we make these part of the public record. Planning commission is aware of them and the neighboring property owners and citizens are aware of them. So I'm going to start with the piece that, with my background being in economic development and planning, that I first noticed is the northwest corner on a lot the city is seeking to keep in a more commercial nature, has significant landscaping blocking it off from any view, and then there isn't any additional landscaping. Again, the mouse is flirting around on me, but to screen that lot then from the data center use between. And so we are looking for that landscaping to shift. That way, that commercial lot, when it comes in, is able to develop and not have to tear out all the landscaping that was just installed as part of the screening, and that landscaping then would shift onto the data center site. then would shift onto the data center site. To continue that trend, we are looking for additional landscaping along County Road 42. We are looking for additional landscaping along the east side of the site with that building B or Technology Assembly Building. We're looking for all landscaping to be included on the site along this line here, as there's a small hole there. Additionally, just anecdotally wish to make the note that the city will consider the landscaping offsite as we're moving through this. Ultimately, all screening and all landscaping required for this site will be required to be on this site. The city will not be maintaining the landscaping required for screening for this site on any public property, as these ponds will be dedicated to the city. You'll notice that this site plan actually shows a lot better, the trail system that is proposed between. This connects in with the Greenway Trail, this connects over to Health Partners, as you can see here. It creates a nice loop system. It is something that the city is supportive of, allows us to service our ponds, but it also provides an amenity feature to those ponds, which has been a key item that the city has pushed forward for the ponding within this area for some time. Additionally, they are looking to do a lot of grasses within these areas. Our natural resources team does have some pieces in their memo and will further elaborate on some of the additional species so that we could get potentially some native prairie grasses to establish. And this area being sand and gravel, I alluded to this earlier, water drains very quickly, and so stabilization will be important, and utilizing grasses that are able to survive are important. And so the exact species of those will need to be slightly worked out. Additional study required by the applicant as we move through. One other item that I highlighted for myself and circled three times was just because this shows so well where Health Partners' building pad is, because it's got the aerial background on it. That shows you just kind of the scale and scope and distance of these ponds. So they are very large and provide a nice buffer between 155th and that more active commercial area to the south and this proposed site plan. Let's see, going through my list here, the only item that I would note is the lot adjacent to the substation being screened as well. I'm going to go through a number of building elevations. What I've done so that they are more understandable, because they even took staff a little bit when working with the applicant to figure out which building are we looking at in these elevations. And so I understand if those online or planning commissioners weren't able to quickly identify which elevation they were looking at. So I've highlighted the building that we are looking at the elevation of. The applicant can also let me know that I might be wrong on some of this as well and further clarify as they come forward. So the first building we are looking at is their kind of water building. What we are seeing out of this building is it about 50 feet tall with some large screen walls. It would likely not be visible from offsite. It's quite interior to the site by several, I want to say thousand square feet, I'm sorry, not square feet, linear feet. So it is pretty in-depth to the site, and I will get into some of the code in terms of building materials in a little bit that'll help you kind of evaluate this as well. These are all of the elevations, but as you notice, there are some really large screen walls. Those are for those tanks that you're seeing on the site plan right behind. And so they did provide screen wall around that area. That's some of the massing pieces that staff is wanting to look at and then seeing where visibility levels might be from offsite to ensure that if it's visible, it meets the code that we have just recommended or proposed. So the second elevations are for the single story, as they have titled them on the site They have a, to make this easier, there isn't a north and south like there was for the water building. There's a front and back, because as you'll notice, these are considered a front here and here, and then towards the yard where they will not be visible from offsite, they're considered the rear, and this building is subject to that as well. So there are some clarifications the applicant will need to make in terms of some of the heights. You'll notice the roof is 33 feet, and the parapet screen wall is 28 feet but above it, so likely some scrivener's scare, errors as they're going through types of things, easy to have happen. But the big piece that I want to note on this and that staff is looking for some additional clarification is just how long some of these buildings are. We know that they're significant in square footage, but it's difficult for me to even share on a screen like this just how massive these spaces are. And particularly on the view from front elevations, we're wanting to make sure that that massing is broke up. That's what was in the draft ordinance, that long spans of single materials and massing and coloration could be used to break up that space. I'll actually have the direct code excerpt in a little bit. These are the views from the sides, so this would either be east towards the interior of their site, or potentially English Avenue, or west towards Johnny Cake. And again, we're seeing parapet walls going up at around that 47 feet tall height. These are the single story on their site plans. One of the things that staff did note, both in the site plan and in this presentation, we're looking perhaps how many levels they have in the building and then maximum heights of different portions of the building located on a site plan. We want to make sure that we're very clear when the public is looking at this, that single story may not imply a 47-foot-tall area, and we're wanting to make sure that that's very transparent as this comes forward, so that people aren't thinking, well, we said it was a single story and it's significantly taller than what we might otherwise perceive as a single story. Same goes for their two-story buildings in the northeast corner of the site. These are not as massive in terms of length, however, they are, of course, taller. Let's see, because I was worried that we wouldn't be able to read this. We are seeing 72 feet tall for the parapet walls and 81 foot tall up to the penthouse area. That penthouse area is a tiny, tiny percentage of the total building area. The draft ordinance does exclude that and the calculation from total height, but does not exclude parapet walls, screening, or height of building. So it's essentially an elevator shaft for the second story. That is common on our taller buildings. You will actually see that on Wings, you will see that on Legends, you will see that on several others, where that height is not counted towards overall height of a building in most cases. These would then be the sides that would be facing north and south. So these would be the ones that without some level of birmingham as you're on the trail on 42 that you'd start seeing. And particularly on the building, and I'm going to actually scroll back here, there's that large wall that you are seeing here that is a screen wall. We are looking for building materials, we are looking for what this is going to look like. We want, staff has strongly encouraged photos or required photos, and strongly encourage that the applicant perhaps even work with their architect to bring in sample materials. We've done this for you before on buildings where materials could come up as a concern. The last one that I can think of is the proposed U-Haul, the building that never actually proceeded, but we were able to bring that in, bring that in for the neighbors to feel, touch, see that material, and then combined with the photos, just gave a little bit better understanding of what we might be looking at. So staff has strongly encouraged that piece as we're continuing to review this application. The final item is a building that we don't actually have an elevation for, and it happens to be the one that's most prominent to the single-family residential. Now, again, the applicant may end up correcting me, and I may have the water building and this building confused, but I do not believe so based upon my review, but they might be nodding behind me. So one piece I wanted to mention, this comes up very often with our planning commission. You guys have been amazing at working with an applicant to result in our code that requires four-sided architecture. This means that a building must be equally attractive on all four sides. In the draft code, we do have a provision simply due to the size of this site and the fact that there will be significant interior portions that will not be visible that you see below, that would essentially take that four-sided and make, allow for some flexibility when you are dealing with a building that's 1,000 feet long and in a secure site surrounded by two fencing that no one can get in and has got significant landscaping, birmingham and screening to viewing it. We have allowed things like this in some of our industrial areas, Skennell being the last example. So specifically, when they came in, they had walls where then they could have materials that were less desirable within. You've seen this in addition with things like Dix Valley Service, where they've got wrecked vehicles within their fenced area, but the fence is essentially screening those vehicles. So it's attempting to meet that same intent that you sometimes see on sites that would otherwise house things that are less desirable to outside view. I already noted this, and so I'm going to go through really, really quickly, but I really want to highlight that those building materials have not been provided just yet. We have one called a pack clad. Looking at that website, there's a number of materials that they could choose from those, oftentimes used on parking garages and other nature. Attractiveness is a subjective item, however, there are, in my opinion, there are some items that are fairly attractive, and there are some items that perhaps could use an upgrade on their website. It depends on what they're being used for, and we just need clarity at this time as to what material the applicant is proposing. So I've told you before and I alluded to that we were, or that I took some photos, and that staff is going to be looking for some additional information. One of the things that staff is looking for is sightline studies from major intersections and surrounding properties, and we've provided the applicant with a map of the areas that we'd like to see these from, so that the public can get an idea of what things look like. Today, I went out, and it was quite cold, and tried to take some of the photos to allow the commission and the public, and I'm sure many members of the public here are particularly on the two red triangles over on Emery Circle, well aware of what current site looks like. But for those of us that don't live there and see this daily, I wanted to provide some of that. One of the other key reasons why I chose two locations over on Emery Circle is they actually happen to be above the grade of this site. So that Birmingham will, on the west side, I'm sorry, east side, will be very important near that Technology Assembly Building or Building B, because these homes will be looking at that building. Now, that is one of their primary buildings for office stuff, so it could likely be one of their more attractive ones and look similar to Health Partners. Or it could not, based upon what building materials they choose. So that's why I'm making this emphasis and one of the reasons why I spent the time making sure to get out there and be able to show the commission some of these. So starting from, and let me just, starting from here, I am taking photos and going in a clockwise motion around two Health Partners, just so that the commission is aware, and then I skip over the two photos here. The first one being the one of the north and the second one being the one of the south. So this is the existing substation. Up here, you'll see County Road 42. You'll notice there is that significant grade change that you can see on the grading plan. That continues into the site. That being said, this site is only three, from this finished floor, is only three feet below Health Partners. So it's not that the entire site is dug into a hole. It is significantly below the grade of 42. We then pivot over to seeing the corner here of Pilot Knob and 42. Here's the beginning of the single-family homes and the Apple Valley Cemetery, and then County Road 42. You start to see that north of County Road 42 is our sites of slightly more industrial nature. You're seeing a cellphone tower there. Then this is me pivoting and turning towards 152nd Street and the Health Partners. Health Partners is 42 feet tall for reference, so most of the buildings we are working with on this site are, particularly in this area, are taller, and the buildings on the southern side of the site are shorter. One final item that I apparently forgot to put the triangle down on, but really glad I took, this is their proposed driveway, and this is looking at the Chafin Vet and Health Partners. So this is English Avenue in front of you and the entry that we showed into that technology park at the security area. So from public right of way, want to be very, very clear, I did not go into anyone's yards to take these photos. This is standing on sidewalks or within the circle and zooming in as much as I can with my phone. This is what these homes are currently looking at, and this was my attempt to try to show what these homes would be looking at. You will notice that their basement elevations are still above where I'm standing, and so these homes will have some view into this area, and I do want to make sure that that is very clear as we move forward on this. One of the things that I would have, in the future, liked to be able to clarify is, in compared to something like this phone pole, where is the tops of some of those buildings? Where are the top? I need to use the right grammar, I apologize, or Sharon will come after me. We are looking for some of that, that is what some of the sightline study is for. Again, I want to really emphasize that this is a common spot at this stage to have these questions, and so asking them is part of the process and the applicant responding is part of the process. So while we don't have it currently, it would be preferred if we did. We would move forward with an item like this through iterations to make sure that we can answer those questions. So one of the other items that I want to get into, we've got a large section of code there on fences. I'm not going to read it off exactly. This is, again, why I include some of this as part of the public record, but we are looking for that fence to be of a attractive nature. They've noted that it's Palisade style. We are looking for the massing of that fence to be broken up. Palisade style, for those who aren't aware, wrought iron, that style in nature, generally semi-seethrough, not opaque where it would be like a vinyl fencing that you couldn't see through, but an upgrade from a chain link. They are not proposing any barbed wire, they are not proposing any materials that the city has not allowed on any other site other than the tank farm, and that is for very obvious reasons. We are looking for distancing between these elements so that we can determine, you know, are we having 600 feet between a decker development or 200 feet, because this site plan is so massive. So hopefully, we will bring that back to you at a future date. Planner math is not something I love to brag about, we're not engineers. There is a provision within the draft ordinance that says that no more than 40 vertical elevation, no more than 40 feet of vertical elevation of a building is visible from adjacent arterial roadways. All the math that you're seeing on this, so for instance, at that top of berm, Pilot Knob and County Road 42, this 48 feet, I'm not saying at this point that there's eight feet above that 40 feet that's allowed. I'm not able to determine that at this time. We're needing additional information from our applicant to be able to determine that. And one of the key reasons why this has been important is the applicant actually reviewed some of that draft ordinance beforehand, because we were, you're going to have to meet these, and they found that acceptable. And so since they found that as an acceptable response, we want to make sure that that is met. Now, that is only when increasing up to a height of 100 feet, I should also place that large asterisk. To give that perspective, however, the Health Partners, ground floor elevation is only three feet above some of the proposed buildings adjacent to it, and the total height of that is 42 feet. So the data center buildings, the tall buildings, will be significantly taller, but they will be significantly offset from the property lines. The tallest building in Apple Valley right now is Wings Financial at 87 feet. These would not become the tallest building in Apple Valley. So wanting to make sure that that is aware, that is just a fact more than intended to be swaying one way or the other or making a value judgment. The draft code requires a noise study be completed. We have potentially received some of those first findings today. I think around 3:34, we're not going to be able to comment to those. I believe some of that is included in some of the applicant's presentation. We've asked for a photometric plan to ensure that not only during construction, if this were to proceed, but also during finished, that they would meet lighting requirements that would be required of any other industrial property when adjacent to residential. So do be aware that we are looking for that at both stages. Tax benefit is not required for the applicant, however, it is something they have brought up as a benefit for their use within the community, and so we would like to be able to have that further explained if they're going to use that as a potential benefit to the community, which quite possibly could be arguable and we could support. We do need to evaluate that before staff would come forward and be able to say one way or the other whether it could be or could not be. And then the potential low employee count, again, we received that update of a potential 200 full-time jobs. We're looking, is that on site? Is that 200 full-time jobs with the security company, the electrician, the plumber, the... Is that 200 full-time jobs with the security company, the electrician, the plumber, the, what is that, where does that 200 number come in, and what does that break down? So that we're at least expressing correctly to the Planning Commission and City Council where the job count would be at for an area that, while we know office is a now difficult use, my counterpart in Eagan, Jill, the Community Development Director, has said that they're finally below a billion square feet of office empty. Yay! So we are dealing with a significant change since COVID with that. Medical office is still strong, and employment has been a priority on this site for the city for that 30 years that I identified earlier. So we want to make sure that the council and Planning Commission are well informed as this project moves forward. Now, I spoke for incredible amount of time here. I wanted to go through a lot of details and take this seriously. That being said, we do have members of the public, so want to make sure that we get their public testimony, and I will stand for any questions and try to answer those relatively quickly or defer them to the next meeting.
Okay. My whole panel should light up, right? First of all, Alex, you did a phenomenal job. You did great, and thank you for going so above for all of us to understand, so applaud to you on that. I have written down many things, so it's going to be scattered. My first comment is going to be that this area was going to be a development to bring in strong economy, strong employment, and stuff like that. Whatever happened to medical offices? Like you just said, medical offices are still in high end demand. How come we haven't heard about clinics coming in, hospital coming in, all that kind of Where was I going with this? The other thing is, is when you take up all that acreage and only 200 employees, you know, if it was broken down into multiple different businesses, would that bring in more employees than 200? My biggest concern is the water usage. You know, we all are residents here, and we've all had a few summers where we had droughts. We weren't even able to water our plants, water our grass, all that kind of stuff. When you bring in this big of a development, what happens in the future when more companies, more businesses want to come in that use a water supply, and we don't have any water to give to them? Are we going to look foolish on the development that we didn't think of that for the future? So that is a huge concern of mine, is the water usage. Did a little research on technology parks. Silicon Valley in California's one, correct? There's one research triangle or something park in North Carolina, right? Otherwise, there's all in other countries, but that was the two that I came up with. So to me, when I was reading this, was my question was, why Apple Valley? Why are they looking to come to Apple Valley? What brings us so important that they want to bring this here? I'm guessing that they're using water and they're using energy, right? So therefore, think about the temperature in Minnesota. It isn't really hot all that time, so I'm guessing that they use more water when, well, some of us probably don't even know, or why do they use water? That wasn't really emphasized on why that's important for this business, is because it cools it down, right? So therefore...
Chair, that is correct.
When I did my research, it's 70 degrees and above is when they need to have water brought in to cool down the system, correct? Is it 70 degrees?
No. And I'll get into it in a minute.
Okay. So therefore, I'm guessing they want to come to Minnesota because we don't have that hot of days, is my guess. But again, if we are not able to have our waterworks right now be able to handle the filtration and stuff like that, and we need a new upgrade, who's paying for it? Are us residents paying for it, or, you know, who's going to pay for that? So I did pros and cons. Cons is, you know, the downside to threatening the protection of biodiversity. It's linked to government policies sometimes, power outages, insufficient water supplies. So me, as a resident, that's what I'm looking at, concerned about. I have stuff written down all over, but again, my concern is why aren't we bringing in other businesses, like what we were kind of told at the beginning of what we were desiring to have? I understand everybody's view on this, from, you know, the sellers and everything else. I understand that COVID changed things, but how do we know how long that's going to happen? What happens if this company comes in and down the road, they up and leave, and we've got all this stuff sitting there? Okay. Yes, I got lots of people here. Let's start with Commissioner Halas.
Thank you. And I hope this is presented in the future here, that I know that Rosemont, possibly Farmington, are looking at data centers also. I don't know how far they are along with that. Drawing a lot of waters you were talking about, are we coordinating with those locations, those facilities? Are we drawing off the same aquifers? And are we going to have a problem if all of us look individually of what we're getting now and what they're getting now and what's going to be in the future? That could be a great issue. Like you said, when we have droughts, we have to take a look at our own watering of our grass and limitations. How much of this is going to be in a crisis mode in the future if we have to look at, this is what we have to come up with, and we don't have enough within the aquifer to provide for all the regional area that that covers? I don't know what, I've heard it's a Jordan aquifer that we're drawing out of, but it's, how far does that go, and who's all drawing off of it, and how much can it maintain? And so I'm hoping there's presentation on that. I'd like to see that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair. Alex, I just have a few things here, and I'm just going to kind of read them off, and then you can take and put them into the record, and we can discuss them at the next meeting, unless it's something easy and you want to comment on it right away. One comment is, the property line on the west side along Johnny Cake, is there going to be, along with trail connection, is there going to be a sidewalk that goes along there? If the plan in the, that's a question to take a look at. Then if you look at, you showed two entrances, one off of 152nd Street West, where you're making a right turn in there, that seems to be quite a sharp turn going into the facility. So how that's going to manage it in terms of truck traffic, and that might need some looking at as you move forward with things. Fire egress into the facility with it as a gated facility, and how that's going to work with the fire department, and then with these internal road system or street system, the accessibility of the fire department, and I know they look at that on a separate basis, but, you know, with turning radiuses and so forth, that's a concern that I was saying. You talked about, this is going to probably be maybe a three- to five-year phase plan, and I would like to have a better idea going forward as starting point, and then when completion could be estimated to be. And then how is the unbuilt-out areas going to be handled in terms of fencing and landscaping, and what the plan would be for that versus just, you know, building out and doing landscaping with the current buildings that are completed, but then that the others just left as it currently is, is sand and gravel, that we look at maybe doing some prairie grass or doing something so that over that period of time, it retains some visual benefits? There's no reference to trash enclosures with the size of this, placement of generators, screening on all those, loading dock or docks? And I think we usually look at that, we don't allow for like overnight semi-parking and that type of concern. Landscape, you've kind of talked about the building, parking area, trash enclosures, generators. One question I had, and with the maximum roof height of the buildings, does that also include any mechanicals that aren't referenced on here, that the mechanicals would not be going over above that 75 or 100 feet? We talked about fences, hours of operation, and what can be expected for traffic, you know, for residential areas, east or west? And also, as you mentioned, dialing in the parkings, that they have additional parking if we don't need it, you know, then we have to deal with water runoff and things that go along with that. Concerns, as already has been stated, usage of water, what that means in the big picture of Apple Valley and going forward. Also, the use of generators and diesel technology, you know, are those, as far as pollutants go? Are they the same, you know, stringent technology that the semis are having to use today, or that's an area that I don't have expertise on? Like to have better understanding of that. The power usage, you mentioned about having a photometric plan of the facility, and I find that, you know, it's really important to take a look at that and how that bleed off is going to happen on either to the east or proposed residential to the west going into the future. And I think last and finally I have here is building design, four-sided architecture, balanced architecture, and it, I think there's some struggles maybe with the size of the buildings, but I think any good architect will take on that challenge. Comment in terms of, you know, a straying, maybe going away from what the 2030, 24 plan was. There was just in the news, Business Journal this week in downtown Minneapolis, one of the, I think it was Mayor Prize Buildings, sold back in 2016 for over $200 million. This week, it closed for $6 million to a new buyer. It's just that office real estate is just, there's just not a marketplace for it right now, and with COVID, and it just hasn't come back. So we're just looking at new and better ways of how things can be used here. So I think that covers the questions that I had, so thank you.
Commissioner Mahowald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be somewhat repetitive of the other, the chair and the other commissioners. Just kind of a quick question for you, Alex. When you're making reference to generators, are we talking about backup diesel generators? Or are we talking about other generators that are just used in the, over the normal operations of the facility?
Chair Kurtz, Commissioner Mahowald, what has been expressed by the applicant, but they could provide additional clarity, is that these would be backup generators in the event of a power outage. These facilities need power at all times.
And I guess they might, I don't know, other sources of, I'm familiar with backup diesel generators. I don't know what the type of generator that would be used for this facility for backup power, but that...
That part is not clear.
I would love some clarification of that.
The applicant does have a presentation after this, once the commissioners have made initial comments, that they are, may likely answer some of that.
Certainly. I also want to echo the thoughts. Great job on this. The thoroughness that Alex, Evan, and staff have done is great, and I appreciate the comments and questions that you've redirected towards the applicant. Getting to see some sightlines, getting to see the elevations of these buildings relative to the sightlines from the residential area, relative to the streets. You know, it is just a massive development, and the size of these buildings are staggering, really, especially when you look at it relative to the Health Partners Clinic in those aerial photos. So all of those things that you're asking for are important to me, and I'm sure they're important to the public and the other commissioners, and I would like to see that information. I also want to echo, and maybe, you know, my concerns are, what's the highest and best use for this development? And, you know, we previously recommended the approval of a new definition or a new zoning district that had, you know, again, in Section 155.30, 310B, all of these permitted uses, which, getting back to Chair Kurtz, you know, one of the goals is jobs. And I'm curious, how many people are employed at the Health Partners Clinic relative to the footprint of this new development? Just a fraction of it? How many people are employed at Health Partners? How many people would be employed at McDonald's? As you work on down the line, how many people are employed at Lund's and Byerly's? Work down the recent businesses that have been added to this area, and what kind of jobs are being created or have been created, and how is this development, how does this development compare to that? Because again, we're talking about potential future uses, whether it's clinics, healthcare, restaurants, hotels, banks, credit unions, all other sources of employment, and it seems like we're capped out here at 200. And again, what type of jobs, we don't really know. And is that in the best interest, long-term best interest of our community? I also am very curious to see a tax analysis, because again, relative to larger employers, what will this provide? And I'm sure, I guess I'm assuming, but again, the question is out there, we will obviously have property taxes. I would assume that some of this equipment would result in some personal property taxes and things like that. But what does it mean? And I'd like to see some effort to quantify that, and I think that that's, the tax benefits is a very worthwhile endeavor to get some clarification on that. This is also, maybe perhaps, I guess I also want to add too, the comments that have been received so far are very helpful. In particular, as previously noted, there's a great interest in the Minnesota Legislature currently with regard to data centers, artificial intelligence, what that means for our state and for our communities, both in terms of the water usage, as been previously discussed, but also with respect to our power supply, our electrical supply. Do we have the capacity to bring these on? What does it mean? There was some discussion about Great River Energy adding an additional substation. Those would be useful things. What would be necessary to provide power to support this use? What does it mean in terms of our existing infrastructure? Will, because, and again, this is just one of many proposed developments, as someone pointed out, for data centers here in Dakota County. The cumulative effect of those could put us in a somewhat precarious situation with respect to both power and water usage, and I think we need to tread carefully, because we're not alone, and there's a lot that's not known about what that's going to mean. So again, thank you for the comments so far, and I'm sure we're going to get more, and I am interested to hear from the applicant on these and other issues. And then finally, one last little point. You know, when I was driving past, and through and around the area, even down past Health Partners and where the McDonald's is going to go, when it comes to the burms, you know, the burms that are there are to shield a sand and gravel pit. The, and I, I'm just curious as to sort of the long-term plan for the burms, will there be some additional landscaping along those burms? Because you drive by it right now, and it's just a, you know, weedy, overgrown grass, scrub brushes and things like that, and I think we can do better for that future development along there. Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Some of this is to echo on the discussion about water usage and power supply, and hopefully, when... when the applicant gets an opportunity to speak, they can also address, you know, the impact of emissions and e-waste, which I understand is also tied to data centers, but also concerned about the longevity of data centers. Massive buildings, it'll be hard to repurpose at some point, and, you know, maybe there'll be some discussion about the duration of a server, the lifespan of chillers, and what's the expectation, maybe in the industry, on, on how long data storage centers last, and how often and frequent are the equipment inside, you know, in need of replacement? Thank you.
Okay, looks like all the questions have been brought up, so, bring up the applicant, unless, did you have anything else, Alex?
Madam Chair, I do not, just cleaning up my materials as people come to the stage or podium.
You're welcome to come up.
Does have a presentation that will be brought up shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex, members of the Plan Commission, Drew Johnson, Opden Investment Company, or a Minneapolis-based national property developer. You want to go, do I have the clicker up here?
Yep.
So, with us today, and maybe starting with John at Dakota Electric, is here to, and I think a lot of the questions they would be, he would be best to ask around delivery of power to the site, their reliability in their network, how the, these large users function into their member rates and so forth, so, John's here. We also have Kim Lee Horn, the civil engineer on this team, so, a lot of the discussion around water, which has been happening in real time, given the PFAS, as we've been working with the city throughout the summer and the PFAS issues and kind of that, that moving target that they've been dealing with, they're, they're also here. Penny Design Group is the architects, they do technology parks and data centers nationally, we've worked with them in other states. And then we have both Greater MSP and D, you'll see some job quotes from D, to boat, to construction jobs on these, and they've been project partners. Our function is the landlord, we would lease these buildings to a tenant, and we've worked with this tenant across the country. I think a lot of these, maybe before I get started, relative to the staff report, is we try to divide and conquer, I don't have a ton of elevations in here, not wanting to have another, you know, fifty-page presentation, we'll focus on a lot of the, the job component of it, we have some, some look boards or some pictures of other data centers we've built across the country that I think give a better feel of those large elevations. Overall, with a lot of the comments on the staff report, we agree with on sliding the buildings back further from the road, adding to landscaping, and then supplying more materials that are specific and responsive to the questions that come up, because yeah, as we've all talked about, a lot of buildings, one hundred and twenty acres, and, you know, what's, what's the right level of detail to go into the questions? So, I think we have some of that here, but we absolutely will get into more of that. Project summary, five data center buildings, one tech assembly logistics facility, we've heard some of this before, a secure perimeter, five or so year full build cycle. The five-acre commercial lot on the northwest corner of the site, I'll come back to that later when the guiding documents are up, but I think that's an important component to this, that there, you know, there is an additional chance at future commercial on a scale that's equal to the Health Partners, McDonald's and Vet parcel now, which is consistent with the guiding documents. Public amenities, I think this is also consistent with the guiding documents, and a chance to work together on how those should look and feel as they connect to the residential to the south. But the city trails around the ponds and how these gateway elements, as you look at the site, how they should function in, in Apple Valley, depending on the corner you look, you look at. Two hundred full-time jobs, that's employees, full-time employees only, any contractors, and we'll get into that later, we'll be over and above that. And then, last high level is that, as, as Alex, I think it was mentioned, no public subsidy, no TIF requests, no tax abatement request, and then we'll get into some of the public infrastructure that the project is building. And, and please stop me anytime if we want to dive deeper into some of these items. So, these are all two-story data centers, so these would be comparable to, you, you guys have that, that board that maybe you can set, set up here that we can reference to this, on the site? If this is fair, if this is helpful, but these would reference this, this area of the site, on these two-story buildings, but kind of a cleaner, modern tech look to these. Pre-cast panel, architectural pre-cast panels are the base material, and then there's glazing, metal panels, louvers, accent elements, eyebrows, fenestrations on the top that we can add to the buildings to, as Alex said, break up some of the massing and scale. One thing to note on these buildings is that the technology, the building is somewhat the technology in how they function in terms of drawing in outside air, exiting hot air from the data hall, so there are some roof penetrations, so, you know, the building very much has, is part of the technology and how it's designed for the efficiency of the data center. Profile of the data center campus, starting off on the job creator, and we have a slide later and a description of jobs and salaries of a data center we run in Olathe, Kansas, that we delivered to a different hyperscale client about two years ago, that can, I think, provide some good context, you know, we heard of the Health Partners jobs, the McDonald's job, the Vets job, they'll provide some context of the type of employment here. As, as was mentioned, high energy consumption, low traffic, low impact on services, schools, emergency response, parks and wrecks, high property tax, we have a slide later that compares the full build scenario here with the two most, the largest existing data centers in Minnesota. High capital investment, and that's, you know, directly correlated with the high property tax. And then on the annual water usage, we have some slides for that that I think do a good job, especially responding to some of the public comments on, you know, put it into context of other developments, annual consumption, use of, current water use of the mining operations and so forth. And here, this particular data center's technology, it uses less on an annual basis than an office development, probably even an office development of half of its size. And what we were talking about are, but it does have high summer peaks, and we have a graph that kind of shows both the annual and the daily water usage that corresponds with how the buildings you, is using. Heard this too, why Minnesota? Overall, Minnesota's a very underserved data center market, there is available power and water and sewer. There are, Minnesota revenue has data center tax-specific incentives that focus on capital investment from the end user, they're not on the real estate side that would benefit us necessarily, and they're modeled after, you know, the same equipment tax incentives that farmers have, anybody doing manufacturing or anyone that has a high capital investment of equipment, that's what the data center tax incentives are modeled after. You know, for perspective about, thirty-five states have data center tax incentives. Generally, we're surrounded between the Dakotas, Iowa, Nebraska, Wisconsin and Illinois. We're the least competitive relative to our immediate neighbors on our data center tax, and it's a little bit esoteric, but it has to do with, all of their equipment tax incentives have to do with getting the direct deduction instead of applying for it, getting it later, and the periods are longer in all of those states based on how long it reflects your equipment. So, Minnesota is, on a relative basis, less competitive than our neighbors on that. This was also touched upon, which, you know, might be at first a little counterintuitive, but I think Minnesota is attractive to most of these hyperscale data center companies, because it aligns with their ESG goals of how they want to produce their energy. The Googles, the Microsofts, the Metas, the Oracles, the AWSs, they purchase the largest PPAs, power purchase agreements from all of these national utilities, trying to buy carbon-free energy off the grid, so it aligns with their climate goals. Minnesota has the pledge to be carbon-free by 2040. The East Coast, most of those in like Dominion Territories, some of those, it's 2050, it's 2050 in some of the states to our south on these carbon-free goals, so, that's, you know, that's an incentive for them to come here relative to achieving their, their climate goals. I heard the free cooling, and that's exactly right, that the ambient temperature of the air, when you bring it across servers throughout the year, makes these data centers more efficient. And then, the educated labor force and the strong and qualified construction market here. We build these nationally, and we also have one, a smaller version of this approved in Eagan, different user, a little bit different technology, but the quality of the construction force here compared to building across the country has been very, very stark and very strong, so it's, I think that's good for Minnesota. Any questions on that component while I'm on that slide? So, the current state of the data center market is, compared to other Midwest cities, Des Moines, Omaha, Chicago, our data center investment has lagged on a, both on an absolute and per capita basis, I think there's a lot of reasons that go into that with initial fiber optics path, some of the early state incentives. And relative to our Fortune 500 company presence, we're last in the nation among the largest thirty metros on our data center investment. So, you know, the, the Cargills, the United Health, that, you know, they're consuming cloud services, data centers elsewhere across the country, you know, relative to what's available here, so that's, you know, that's the most, I think, stark imbalance relative to our corporate presence. The Minneapolis-St. Paul MSA, we're sixteenth largest in the country, but we have the twenty-fourth largest data center market as measured by megawatts, that emphasizes that. And then, our first hyperscale data center, and we would, you know, call anything over a hundred megawatts, two hundred, three hundred thousand feet, starts approaching this new hyperscale side, with some of this new proposed AI training that's going on, that this site would be small relative to some of these proposed AI data centers, this isn't an AI data center site, this is regular corporate cloud computing that, you know, any of your, you know, you name a Fortune 500 company, and those are the services they buy and through cloud computing. Any questions on that? I'm going very fast through.
Sure.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, Madam Chair. What are the benefits of the proximity of a data center to a population? What's the benefit that I would experience or notice as a resident?
So, let me go back to, so I think this profile that, low traffic, as you can see on the site plan, that we take, access is taken from the, the existing curb cut as it was planned, off of English Avenue, and our, as measured in the A U A R, our traffic counts work relative to the operations, just using that entrance, so there's not more curb cuts and traffic along the.
Maybe I wasn't as clear, so, you commented on the size of this population in Minnesota, the Twin Cities, and why does it matter that a data center is located close to higher population? Does it matter if it's two hundred miles away versus in?
Oh, got it. I think for both building it, staffing it and operating it, 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 it does matter, and, and it, it varies on, on the use, like crypto mining, you know, that's something that can occur in very remote areas, that after it's built, it requires less maintenance. But, being in population centers with good access to labor, construction companies, not, you know, infrastructure, existing infrastructure that's there is, is really important to data centers and operations.
But the benefit to the citizens?
Capital investment, property taxes, jobs.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Stepping back to the A U A R, and that was the first document that was, or I should say the update of that that was adopted, is, and I think a lot of you probably were here and aware of this, but I think, you know, so many of the questions we got were relative to context of the path of this, is that two thousand and four was the first A U A R for a lot of the Rockport area, and you can see the one hundred and twenty acre site is on both sides. And then the present, as you can see, the development that has occurred, mainly low-density residential, some commercial, by land use area of that original five hundred and sixty acres that it was originally studied in the A U A R and subsequently updated, that the majority of the land area is still mining or undeveloped. Then, next largest is the low-density housing, and then, you know, then the other four uses here, and this is again by land area, five hundred and sixty acres being the total. If this project were to go through, the tech park then would occupy, you know, roughly twenty percent of the overall land area contemplated in the original A U A R, with the mining and undeveloped still being, you know, roughly equal to the low-density housing. And this gets back to the tax. And then, we did a tax estimate on a per square foot basis, based on the current largest data center in Minnesota is the United Health Data Center in Chaska, two hundred and eighty-five thousand feet, the taxes are four dollars and eighty-five cents a square foot. That's, now that data center's more legacy, older technology, but if you carry forward, and this has, this data center has more capital investment in it, but if you carried through those same building values at a full build scenario, the technology park would come in at four point seven million dollars property taxes, and then the same analysis grew all the existing tax base at two percent a year, and it assumes some additional commercial and multi, dense multifamily development south of the site. Back to the site plan, million square feet, that is using both floors on the two-story data center, three hundred and fifty-one parking stalls, currently one thousand one hundred ninety-nine trees and shrubs, acres of green space, twenty-four acres, and then on the closest data center to a property line would be on the west side of the site on the future Johnny Cake, is that two hundred and fifty foot, or it exceeds the recommended setback? This was, this discussed a little bit of, and this is relative to the site and the mining operations, but some of the barriers of development and, you know, kind of the requirements of the project being a very large economic engine to accomplish some of the goals that the city had, and it was identified in the comp plan, which is the Johnny Cake extension, the regional ponding, but there's sixty-five feet of elevation change across the site with the high point being forty-two and Pilot Knob. the high point being 42 in Pilot Knob, low point being 155th. So dealing with that elevation change and given its current state where most of that elevation change comes right at Pilot Knob as the mine goes down and right off 42 as a mine going down, this project doesn't require all of that grade brought back up to have more of a relationship. Thus the comp plan request, then it uses the existing topography. And there's probably a 35 foot elevation change from the floor of this data center and the berm here in the Pilot Knob County 42. And then it's at grade here. The stormwater ponds treat runoff from the future Johnny Cake as well as 42 and some of Pilot Knob. So they're serving both the regional function and they're treating roadway runoff in addition to the data center runoff. The right of way dedication that comes is approximately $9.2 million. And then the project is constructing the Johnny Cake extension and the 155th extension. So there's another $5 million of public roadway construction that the project is doing. Bring up this comp plan exhibit to talk about how some of the guiding documents match or have a theme of the current plan, what we tried to integrate, and then also where they might be different is that in area B, which is at the future County Road 42 and Johnny Cake extension, that lot is staying commercial. When that road is punched through, that, you know, that seven acre lot will be available for future development then. G, which is earmarked as the industrial area, will stay industrial. The amenity features which have, you know, trails around ponds and kind of the central, that's pushing to the south where I think it wants to be, given the change in grade. I think the constructibility of this plan, given the elevation change, would require huge retaining walls to establish all of those pads at, you know, huge expense to, whether it's the current landowner or the future developer, because there's so much elevation change. And since water is all at the same level, you know, you would have to have 155th elevation, which is minus 65, go all the way through the site if you wanted the ponds in the middle. And then you'd have to make up all that elevation change through retaining walls to get to intersection of County Road 42 and Pilot Knob. So I think, you know, and I know this is conceptual, it's a plan, you know, called a blob plan, but I think it, it doesn't take into account the actual constructibility and presents a little bit of a, of a false choice in terms of having these segments of commercial areas, given how huge the elevation change is. Okay. There was a public comment and we heard it here, really taking a step back on the overall water usage. And it's been a very, obviously discussed here tonight, but per the D N R, Apple Valley has 3 billion gallons of year of appropriations. That's water usage on an annual basis. The D N R reported in 2023 that Apple Valley used 2.3 billion gallons of water citywide. The current mining operation has 375 million gallons of appropriated water. And that's a irrigation, industrial irrigation. So that's actual, that's into the aquifer, not on the city system. And in 2023, through their mining, de-watering, rock crushing activities, they used 55 million gallons of water. So fast forward to the cooling system in this building that I'm happy to get into. But based on ash rate conditions of Minnesota, the cooling system runs three to 5% of the year, once the internal server temperature, depending on the wet bulb humidity, gets above a certain point. But the variety, the majority of the year, water isn't being used in the cooling system, only fans and the outside air. And that's results in the low annual usage. And that was under 8 million gallons a year annually would be the cooling water usage of the entire data center campus. Any questions on this or is it worth, there's more water slides after this? So this looks at the published A U A R environmental study of the different scenarios as the initial 560 acres were being developed. And the 2021 update, again, this is on a gallons per day usage, has a figure of 718,000 gallons a day. And then that's based on a mix of commercial, residential and industrial uses. We annualize that figure, knowing that with the exception of, you know, weekends and some peaks that in an industrial or an office use, that that water use is very consistent across the year. There are some peaks in the summer. And then this shows an 85, if you take the A U A R data from 2021, an 85 million gallon a year overall annual water usage versus the 9.3, which is the 8 million for cooling plus estimated irrigation and some of the domestic office. The, right below that is the actual use of the mine, the 55 million gallons. And again, that's not city water, that's aquifer water because of the industrial well. And then below that is the appropriated, the D N R permitted annual water use of the mine. So we talked about the, a curve of the water usage and the earlier presentation dealt in peak max flows, which, which, which the analysis is correct is that on a, you know, your hottest day in July, 3 o'clock, the servers are going, that's when that instantaneous peak is the highest. And then you can see as, you know, as, as logical for Minnesota weather, it falls off and, you know, the, the cooling water usage is, you know, negligible to zero September, October, November, December, January, February, March. And then this also approximates the daily usage, how night air, lower server, server volume, outside air can cool as the day gets hotter, then water is introduced to maintain those server temperatures. Any more questions on water?
Commissioner Mahalad?
Just, just one quick question. Going back to that last slide. How does, how does that compare to like the, in one of the previous slides, you looked at kind of comparison, water usage? I would imagine, I guess I have no, no idea, that a sand and gravel mine would be using most of the, the highest use of water would also occur during the summer months. So I'm just wondering if, you know, with that peak, how does that compare to the current use or some of the alternative uses that you looked at in, in the previous slides?
Yeah. My sense is it would be a plateau for the mine, or that's how the graph would look is that, you know, they're not processing material during the winter months, you know, they're taking it in, but they're not processing it or reclaiming it. And then once the, you know, the road construction work season starts, the, you know, the construction season starts, I think it goes up and it probably flatlines through that production. And then once the road construction season closes and, you know, the moisture starts freezing in the product, then it probably falls off really fast. So I'd expect it to be a plateau. Okay. Sound study. I think that was the second most talked about item. So again, providing some context here is that current Minnesota statute groups, I think there's three or four uses of land that go in different tiers. And that's where state level sound limits fall into. The most, or the, as we would imagine, residential R1 has the lowest daytime and nighttime limits and going up through office all the way to industrial. But during daytime, and then some, I'll back up and, you know, city, please jump in, but some cities have very stringent or specific sound laws and some it isn't mentioned or refers to state statute. But daytime decibel limit at household units, and that's defined in the ordinance, is 60 decibels. And then the nighttime units on these, you know, tier one household units is 50 DBAs. And there's a state statute. So we'll show you these receptors. So as part of this sound study, the sound study company set up to, to get an existing condition of ambient sound, these receptors in areas surrounding the site and then collected a daytime hourly average in decibels and then a nighttime hourly average. And then, you know, maybe I'll ask Will at Kimley Horn, was that over two weeks, three weeks, four weeks on how long those receptors are left there?
I think it was a couple of weeks.
And then here's, here's a graphic from the internet that, and there's, you know, the versions of these are, are out there that talks about, you know, how, how we perceive decibel levels. Looks like we're going all the way from a ticking watch up to a gunshot. But that's, and then here's, so here's the, and let's see if this pointer works. So the receptors were, were these, or these receivers were these red dots here that were set up in these sensitive, or these residential areas to the north immediately, to the east and then to the southwest. And you can see the Minnesota nighttime limit is this red line going on the sound gradients. And then the sound gradient is below that in the key where 40 decibels is the dark green going all the way up to red would be the 70 decibels. You know, and before I get into that, let me, okay, let me quick come back to the existing conditions is that from those receptors, on the existing conditions between either during the day, traffic and mining operations and presumably at night, traffic, that everyone was above the nighttime Minnesota limit of 50 decibels with receptor one and three being the highest at 69 and 63. And then you can see, you know, correspondingly receptor one had the highest daytime existing conditions. And then, you know, receptor two and three were kind of tied. So the findings here were that existing conditions were in exceedance of the residential on, in some of these areas. So this is normal operations. The majority of this noise is made from the fans that draw outside air into the building and then exhaust hot air through the roof. This is during generator maintenance. These are tier four generators. They're backup generators only. They only provide power to the data center during, when the electrical grid is out. They are tested about 20 to 25 hours a year. And they're tested both individually and in larger groups. And since it's testing, it's just done through the day, during the day. But this is the, and then the site is in, is under the nighttime limit within its boundary for generator testing. So the last graph is, so this would be in a nighttime blackout condition where the electrical grid is down. The project is at full build, meaning all five buildings are operational. And then all the generators start and run. And you can see on this model, early model, that receiver two in the upper right-hand corner, that it is, that those houses are in exceedance of the 50 decibel nighttime Minnesota state limit. It doesn't happen here and it doesn't happen here. The commercial standards of those tier one properties, the, you know, the Menards and that, that stuff, it's, it, it meets all of those, of those nighttime state statute decibel limits of those tier one, which I think are 10 to 15 decibels higher than the residential limits. So, you know, we're working to understand mitigation for that, that pocket there. You know, it's, it's not, the generator noise isn't in exceedance of existing nighttime conditions. Those limits were, or those noise hits were higher. And, and I think that, you know, that kind of tracks, given that intersection. But this would be in, in the, in a grid failure condition. Any questions on sound or, or generators?
Commissioner Holas?
Thank you. Just a quick question in regards to, generators are down. Well, we haven't talked about the fuel running those generators. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yep. So they're, they're tier four diesel generators. And tier four is a standard that relates to admissions. And this is again, a choice by the, by the company, but it would be kind of the California truck equivalent where there's an ammonia tank on the sulfur, on the catalytic converter that mixes. And then, you know, that's what makes the tier four. And then they have enclosure, sound enclosure around it. And that's why it's able to keep these levels lower. I think there was a question and we're, we're happy to talk about it. In fact, there's, you know, the, the, some of the industry would, you know, could go on forever. But there is natural gas technology for generators. It's cleaner, but not quieter. But the startup, especially in cold, you know, that's never caught on in this cloud computing world because both the startup and the ramp up is far less superior to diesel. There are technologies of flywheels and other where you have like huge spinning mass within the data centers, which is, it's constantly spinning. And then the batteries hook up to that. But once there's a power failure, that, you know, they only run, those gyroscopes only run for 20 minutes, 30 minutes. And it's not, you know, practical on the scale of the demand in the cloud computing market.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, excuse me. With the tier four, is that, that the upper level of, is there tier five or, I mean, is as far as minimized?
That is, I think on EPA-measured standard, that's, yeah, that's the upper, upper level.
Okay. And then with the diesel fuel, how's that stored?
So, there are belly tanks under each generator, large belly tanks, you know, designed to, you know, run for, you know, a half a day at a time and then usually these, and this is something that, you know, we're not part of this kind of internal operations of any of the, but there are both diesel and water contracts that these companies have in the case of, you know, massive blackouts that, you know, trucks would roll, refill these belly tanks of these diesel generators. But yeah, to answer your question, I mean, thousands of gallons of diesel would, you know, go into the...
Thank you.
Is it showing up on your screen any?
It goes.
There it is. Okay. Let's see, okay, good. Okay, so, so I mentioned earlier that right now Minnesota's first hyperscale data center is under construction in Rosemount. Meta is the, the end user, they, they own it. And Deed did a, you know, as part of them coming, and they also had some, some tax, some tax subsidies applied to their, as part of their approvals, but they did a, based on the construction of it, did a economic analysis, and again, this is on the construction of it, and these were their findings relative to Dakota County. For, for scale, the Rosemount data center is 750,000 feet. It's one big building, which I, you know, I think from a land use side, the campus style of splitting that up, and I think it has to do with the uniqueness of their network and the topology of it, but it's 750,000 feet, will contain a lot of the same HVAC, electrical, so forth, backup, but this was their findings. And then we took these findings, totaled them and then adjusted for the further square footage to kind of get an apples-to-apples, if you believe square footage is the, the barometer for the full build. And then we put a three-year construction period on and I think both will be longer, but this would be the, the relative impact on the Dakota County economy. Any questions on that side? So, leaving construction and going to operations, I mentioned this before, this is a data center that we build and operate for a tenant in, in Olathe, Kansas. And again, this is, so this building is 120,000 feet. Similar cooling technologies, you can see the water tanks there that are backup and, you know, do with peak uses, single-story. This has, you know, screening around the generator yard, but this is a, and there's less compute going on here than on a relative basis or rack densities than these, this data center, but this is the payroll of this location. And I think noting here is that the CFTs, they're called, Critical Facilities Technician, that's the, by count, that's by far the highest and that's, you know, that's where the bulk of employment comes from and those are the people inside the data center answering server reboots, temp alarms, you know, going through their procedures, diagnosing problems if you have to call in a HVAC tech, a licensed electrician. But that's, you know, when we speak to that kind of blue-collar tech, that's the bulk of the employment on account-wise that operate data centers. And then, yeah, bracketed on, you know, security guard 24/7, that's the lowest on a, both on hourly and on the annual basis. Any questions on? So, we pulled this from Dakota County Technical College Programs and Majors and highlighted all of the academic departments that have crossover in data centers and some of them are kind of on premises and some of them what might be, you know, in an office somewhere and some of them might be, I think the higher paid, longer degrees would be more of the contract employees, the diesel mechanics, the electricians, the HVAC techs. But these are all the, the training and the programs and majors that would staff a data Looks like only brewing science and production didn't make the cut. So, that, that was the bulk of our presentation, you know, trying not to be duplicative of Alex and Evan, but I think some ideas that we would have on ways to work together or next steps or get feedback on are some of these bulleted elements here is that gateway elements, and I think that thinks of, you know, the four corners of the site, you know, what type of landscaping features, hardscape, you know, would, would the city plan commission want to see around the site? And, you know, as an example, I think of this intersection here, you know, it's not, you know, there's probably not a lot of pedestrian connectivity that happens here in this, you know, very busy road. This is more, you know, viewed from a car, viewed going 30, 40 miles an hour, but, you know, does, you know, should there be a gateway element here, you know, that serves a screening that, but that's, I think, something that, you know, that we would want input on. Same thing here on, you know, this, this pond is that, you know, this is two football fields from, you know, the length of a pond to parking. You know, there's, you know, there's thousands of linear feet of trails that want to connect to the residential existing and planned both here and here, but, you know, should, should there be some hardscape? Should there be some, you know, how does this? And I think this is keeping with the guiding documents that it's an amenitized ponding A lot of things were discussed about landscaping and that's, you know, and water is that, like, you know, Alex mentioned that given the high-draining soils, the sand, the gravel, you know, if, you know, the, meeting the letter of the city code is that we're importing huge amounts of topsoil to bring, you know, four feet, five feet of topsoil, irrigating it to support a lot of the trees and shrubs that would match the code-required amount of plantings. You know, can irrigation be cut down with native prairie grasses? Some of this, you know, how, what's the look? Is it, you know, inside the secure perimeter, you know, it's going to be mowed grass, bushes by the entrance and, you know, as kind of experienced by the people working here, but on all these expanses here, you know, what's, what, what feels right on the design? The building design around the site perimeter, you know, again with these expanses, you know, if this is thousands of, you know, thousands of feet away, you know, on this screening at elevation versus, you know, right now, the looks we saw and how it's designed, it's more tech-looky, it's clean, but, you know, could there be masonry elements introduced, you know, at the base as an example to kind of break up facades? But I think, you know, the public is going to see the short ends of these buildings. This building is differentiated in that the office is at a different level than the warehouse assembly area. I think that's important for massing, but, you know, we purposely put this building as a transition buffer. It's 35,000 feet, the massing is broken up, it has more glass, you know, but there, there are a lot of, you know, opportunities in kind of that, that look there. So, lastly, you know, we heard some of the takeaways from staff and we're working on those now, some of the view sheds on the, you know, I think the water discussion is ongoing on the, you know, the peak max versus interior or in water conservation, you know, we're already discussing adding more tanks to onsite water storage as a way to bring down that peak because it's not, in our estimation, it's not an annual consumption, it's that summer peak that, you know, that has the, as Evan talked about. And then also being able to reduce some of the parking to have more, more green space.
Is that it? Have you completed?
Yeah.
I want to move things along here because I think it's been a long meeting for the public's note here and I'm sure you have questions, so we'll try to get things going here. Dakota Electric, would you like to speak on the power energy side?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thanks for having me. I am John Byer, Vice President of Energy and Member Services for Dakota Electric. We're the distribution co-op that serves a majority of Apple Valley, a majority of Dakota County. We have 115,000 members and we are owned and operated by, by our members. A little bit on the power usage. So, as the site plan was in front of you, there's an existing substation on the north side of the property. It's approximately two acres. The plan would be that would expand to five acres as Alex talked about, probably bringing that into one, one contiguous parcel. Currently, what is sitting there now is what you call a switching station. On the north side of 42, and it runs a long pilot knob as well, is 115,000 volt transmission line. That would be the source of power to feed this, to feed this, to feed this project. Obviously, that substation would expand and move from what we call a switching station. Right now, the only thing that's on that piece of property is three switches. It's controlling the flow of power on that transmission line. Nothing is served out of that existing facility. That will change, obviously, if this development were to move forward. We would put a prop, a infrastructure on that site to serve this site. It would be specific to serve this site, right away, not to say it couldn't serve other developments. Certainly, it would probably be used also to serve the west half of the, of the site once that be developed, but currently it'd be a, a single source to serve this existing project. Just to give you an order of magnitude, in Minnesota, Minnesota has about 18,000 megawatts of demand currently. This project would be 1% of that, so we are, we would be designing, we've been asked to study and design for a 300-megawatt facility and that is what we've done. And so, currently, what, what has happened to date? We've done a system impact study that tells us that the transmission system can serve this facility. We are now in the final stages of a facility study. What that tells us is all of the intricate upgrades that need to happen in the area, the exact equipment that will go into that substation to serve it. Nothing has come up that gives us pause to serve this facility. So, as I mentioned, we are the distribution co-op. We are the largest member of Great River Energy based in Maple Grove. Great River is our power supplier. Great River currently has a generation portfolio of about 3,100 megawatts. That is expanding between now and 2029. They have plans to add about 1,100 megawatts of renewable energy between now and 2029. As was stated before, one of the major reasons these facilities are looking here is that 2040 carbon-free plan. That means these facilities don't have to build generation assets themselves. The utilities, by the state mandate, we will take care of their renewable goals for them. Currently, our power supply is about 44% carbon-free. That will continue to grow. We need to be 80% by 2030, 90% by 2035 and then ultimately getting to that 2040, 100% carbon-free. And so, very, you know, we've got one of the cleanest portfolios in the country and we're very proud of that. Commissioner Pruitt, you mentioned, what would this do for the local, locals, a benefit for the locals? One of the things that we are demanding of these projects that we're working with is they're paying for all the infrastructure. All the transmission and distribution infrastructure needed to serve this will be paid by the client. What's that mean? More robust transmission, more robust distribution in the local area, paid for by them, we will be selling a lot more kilowatt-hours. In theory, what that should do is allow us to have stable rates for a longer period of time, much greater time between rate increases. And so, that is a, that is a major benefit from an electrical standpoint. But with that, I know it's getting late, but we will serve it, we'll serve it clean, we'll serve it safe. And one touch, I'll touch on reliability as well. Dakota Electric, we have best-in-class reliability in the state. Because this project will be served directly off of transmission, that is a good thing for reliability. Our reliability is 98, 99% of the time. A typical member of Dakota Electric will have an outage every three years. When you have an outage, it will last about 64 minutes. We track those stats on a monthly basis. And so, we will not hook up any load, this load, a new subdivision, the new McDonald's. If we cannot serve it safely, reliably, affordably, we have to prove that to the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, and we also have to serve it to the independent system operator in this area is MISO. MISO is the transmission operator for 15 states in the central part of the country, starting in Louisiana all the way up to the, into Canada. Minnesota is part of MISO. So, the PUC will be, will sign off on the reliability, as will MISO, before we will hook up anything major of, of this size. So, a little bit there on reliability as well. So, with that, I'd take additional questions or?
Thank you, John. John, what about the future of facilities? Like you said, more subdivisions or more facilities? Would that be able to handle it if you're taking a lot into this area?
Well, certainly, we're in good shape for this area. As was mentioned, Dakota County is getting a lot of activity. Meta over in Rosemount, that is served by Excel. Obviously, the, the facility in Farmington, that is also in Dakota Electric's service territory. We're working with that developer there on power supply for that. That's a much larger facility and that, you know, there's some questions there on, on the power supply for that. But again, nothing will be hooked up without, without adequate power supply identified. This facility is in a little different position. It's, it's smaller and we're, we're able to, able to serve it.
No questions? We need to do our job well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody good? Good, okay. So let's bring the public hearing back. Residents, if you will please come up to the podium to speak and address all comments and questions to the chair. Please state your name and your address when you come up to the mic, please. Thanks for staying with us.
First, I, you know, I'm, my wife and I have been long-term residents here in Apple Valley for over 40 years. When we bought our house originally in Apple Valley, they, our real estate guy said, people come here and they stay here. And I've been very happy with the initial development and the fact that Apple Valley, that you guys plan things and you plan them well, the upgrades for the pools and doing all that stuff. So anyway, and I was impressed with the staff here with Alex and Evan, coming up with lots of good answers. Okay, questions? The water usage question seemed handled, that it certainly could be handled by Apple Valley. What I'm concerned about is there's, I believe, 10 other possible data centers within Dakota County. I've heard, I don't know if this is true or not, that Rosemount had a cap on it, but they basically said, well, if you blow through the cap, that's okay. And I just worry about taking all the water, you know, we live in Minnesota, we've got the Great Lakes, we've got all sorts of water here, but now we're in, what, one small town, they're, they're bottling water and sending it to Arizona, and there's a lot of people that would want our water, and I just think we've got to protect that. And it seems to me that from the state level, there's no one overseeing it. And you guys, I mean, they talked about before, if you guys want to approve this, that's fine, but there's not anybody that's saying, okay, Apple Valley's doing this, Rosemount's doing this, Farmington's doing this, and I, I'm concerned about that. And I would hope that the state at some point in time would, it seems to me like the data center thing is like the Wild West, everybody's kind of doing their own thing. Electricity, if I understand it, then we, that's not going to affect me as a private user, and the data center will be paying for all the electricity and getting it set up. I don't know if, if this data center is going to be a closed-circuit one, which uses less water, because they recycle it, is it, or closed circuit? It will be a closed-circuit one, okay. And again, the long-term work, you know, if Rosemount, if Apple Valley says, okay, we can have 1.5, whatever the number is, over the years, in 10 years down the road, is that gonna, are they gonna say, well, we, we can't operate now, we need more? And again, I'm concerned about the long-term of that. And then, am I understanding it right, the berms and everything around there is going to be covered by the company or not?
Yes.
Like, so the extension of Johnny Cake and that's going to be done with that? So as a taxpayer, it's really not going to affect me?
Not that, no.
And then, you know, and I don't know if this is true, the DNR, to my knowledge, has never said no to anything. Like, they say, okay, Apple Valley has X amount of gallons a year, but there's not, that they've never said no. Again, I think that the DNR, the state's, state government needs to have some kind of control over this, and I don't sense it.
We will answer that later, or do you, anybody want to answer that at this time?
Madam Chair, we would, we'd like to provide a formal answer for this one.
But otherwise, I appreciate this. Now, as a grandfather on grandparent duty today, though, this is a long night for me.
I hear you. Great, I'm a grandparent too. Thank you.
Cindy Diaz, I'm Madam Chair, Commissioner, thank you for letting me speak. Cindy Diaz, I live at 169 St. Celine in Apple Valley. I've been living here for over 30 years, seen a lot of change. Reviewed the project documents, a few things stuck out to me. First, as people have mentioned, this was intended to be a job creation zone. The city had planner identified that, that was long intended to be a job creation zone. Said the applicant is encouraged to provide additional details on the job creation and ancillary jobs created. We did see some of that information tonight. I still don't think that it meets the definition of what the city was looking for. I think it's a big ask for the applicant, given that city leaders have spent considerable effort and have long focused on Apple Valley being a livable community, and residents appreciate that. And a livable community includes local jobs. So I guess I'd just like the applicant to recognize that this is a big compromise of this approval, go forward for this data center. And the other thing that stuck out to me is the size of the facility. It's nearly 800,000 square feet for the main portion of the data center, you know, those five buildings. That's a hyperscale facility. To put in a perspective, the Lakeville's Amazon Fulfillment Center, if you've ever driven by that, that is about the same size. In fact, this proposed data center is slightly larger than that fulfillment center. That fulfillment center is located in an area in Lakeville that's zoned for an industrial park, and that seems a little more fitting for this type of usage. And I wonder, with this size building, we talked a little bit about the generators and some outdoor mechanical systems and the noise they generate, but I'm also wondering how much ambient waste heat is generated from these operations? And, you know, heat island effect is a real thing, and I just wonder if anybody has considered that in this case? Those generators can produce a lot of heat, as do the operations themselves. The other thing that stuck out to me is water. This site is located in the drinking water supply management area. The soils in the area are categorized as high vulnerability, so, you know, extra caution is always appreciated when development occurs in these areas because that groundwater aquifer does supply the majority of our drinking water here in Apple Valley. So we did talk about, you know, the water usage. I think we've honed in on the fact that it's that peak water usage, that's a problem. Those happen in the summer. Madam Chair, you even mentioned, we residents have been asked to conserve water recently by the city of Apple Valley, more so than just the regular water restrictions, and that is concerning. It's concerning because the Met Council also predicts that we will have a reduction in groundwater availability going into the future. We are urbanizing our areas, infiltration is a problem, our recharge of these groundwater aquifers is impacted by these kind of developments and human activity, and we don't have a solution for that yet. And does this usage anticipate the projected climate realities? So right now, we are already experiencing more extreme hot-weather events for longer periods, we are experiencing long periods of drought, it is anticipated to just be more extreme into the future. So does this usage contemplate far enough out into the future to guarantee that we have adequate supply of drinking water, safe and clean drinking water? So what happens when that next heat wave comes through, once this is built, assuming it's approved? Are we going to be asked to conserve the water? Are they going to be asked to conserve the water? Like, who gets priority? So that brings me to energy. So we, again, talked at length about the energy use. I appreciate the data on how much this facility is expected to consume. I think that's important information for decision-makers to have. And I do appreciate that there is a lot of focus on Minnesota's efforts towards 100% carbon-free electricity by 2040. I do question, though, and even the gentleman from Dakota County was a little concerned when we factor in the numerous data centers coming online here in the, in this area, and as we're also trying to electrify the rest of our transportation systems and our appliances and our own, you know, residents and businesses heating. So can, can our grid actually support all of this and still maintain our progress towards clean energy goals? So we know that right now renewable energy infrastructure is not yet capable of supplying the needs. It's great to hear that data centers are willing to be a partner in investing and building out that infrastructure, I am happy to hear that. But I also think that technology and data centers have a responsibility to look at their energy usage. We just heard recent reports of deep-seak, and it is possible to operate these facilities at lower energy consumption, somebody's done it. So I think that there's a responsibility for these applicants to be looking at those options as well. I am not against data centers. Google backs up my photos, I stream things, I use it in my daily work, right? I'm not against them, I understand that we need them. It just, what concerns me are the issues I've highlighted and just the numerous data centers that are coming into the area all at once. We mentioned Rosemount, we mentioned Farmington, there's one proposed in Hampton, there's one just approved in Eagan, and now this one here in Apple Valley, and it's that cumulative effect of energy and water that is concerning me. So if it gets approved, I do hope that the applicant does exhibit responsible environmental stewardship of our home and is a good neighbor in our community. Thank you.
Very nicely done, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening, my name is Dave McKenzie. I live at 640331st Street Court in Apple Valley, and I guess a lot of my questions were answered in the presentations by the city and by the developer, but it still doesn't come back to what the comp plan says. The comp plan envisioned this whole area, this 400 acres, to be a job center. Envisioned that we're going to have 25% of the jobs in Apple Valley, we're going to be in this, this area, which amounts to 4,000 or 5,000 jobs. And here they're coming in and taking a third of the property and only providing 200 jobs. Very concerning about that. This was supposed to be high-density, high-intensity office space, hospital space or medical space, those kind of things. It's very concerning. I think it's a very bad precedent to abandon the retail against Conroe 42. I think that needs to be kept in the, in the plan, in the comp, in the comp plan. It may not be part of their plan, but it should stay in the plan, because otherwise all, when somebody's going to be driving down 42, all they're going to see is weird, long, skinny buildings with no, with really no feel for what they do. Industrial in that complex was expected to be in the 20, 10% to 20% range, the rest was going to be offices and mixed use. They're going to use up about 33% of the property. So it's, industrial is already out of balance. The staff had concerns, should try to figure out the mass of this building. The, the big buildings, the two buildings on the south side are going to be 167 feet by almost 1,300 feet. To give you a sense of that, the menards across the street is two, almost 250,000 square feet, and they're 380 feet by 500 feet, so they're much more square. But to get a concept of the length of this building, it's comparable to what Federal Express ground built over in Rosemount on the golf course on 42. That hasn't opened yet, for whatever reason, but it's a big, long, massive building. And that's what they're proposing to put in here, and they're putting, proposing to put two in here. So the square footage of this is equivalent to like five menards. And here we're trying to make a decision relatively quick on this proposal that has lots of issues. I think I saw a term in the plan that I don't understand what it is. I think I figured out tonight what it is, is the term was a trafficable gravel surface. And from what I could tell, that's a generator pads, but that amounts to almost half, or is equal to the building, square footage. Look at those lighter spaces between those buildings, and, and those are deserts, let's face it, they're gravel, they're runoff, they're going to be weedy. I don't understand the generators, and they have to fill in that whole space, the generators. I think that needs to be talked about, how they're screened, how they should be inside. If it's a parking lot under city code, it has to be paved. So if it's, if it's not, you know, the other one is, is I understand the need for security, but there's two, only two relatively small entrances. What happens if this area has to evacuate? Where do those people go if there's a fire in the main term, main entrance there? They can't get out of the facility. How many trucks will arrive a day? The drive, or the truck access point is very confusing, it doesn't have any stacking distance for trucks to queue up behind it. We talked about the defense, details on the fence, and there was a comment that one's going to be a crash-rated fence, whatever that means. They mentioned how many construction people there are, but they didn't really break it down to how many they expect a day. And how many are they expecting to be working 24/7 like, like the Meta people are? Or are they going to be confined to the city curfew for nighttime work? I think that needs to be put into any agreement. They talked about the substation, which is nice, I was afraid they were going to have to put in more power lines, but it doesn't sound like they need that. The other one is, is these zoning applications have a time limit on them. And has that clock already started? It implied like in the, in the, in the city staff report that it has started, and there needs to be a decision by, in 120 days. Well, there's ordinance review, there's Met Council review, these plans are maybe 50% of where they have to be before you, we can even figure out what they're looked like. So I don't know how we're going to get that done. I think the staff needs to be looking at extending that, especially since the applicant has already deferred putting the comp plan amendment forward to the, to the Met Councils. So I think that's all I have for tonight, it's getting late. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Rachel, I live at 13015 Emmer Place. I just had a...
And your last name, too.
Oh, sorry, Merchant. Some of the comments that have already been said, I agree with. I'm concerned about if there were to be a fire, if our fire department has the training and skills, I'm sure they would assess that, but that would be one of my thought processes. I'm also thinking about, like, have you ever sat outside at Newt's patio and heard that car wash, how loud and obnoxious it is? Like, how many more businesses are going to want to go into the area if we're dealing with the sounds? Just the general, like, aesthetic of the data center? I know you didn't have like an actual image, but some of these don't really seem like they fit in with Apple Valley, they kind of look like a spaceship just landed in the middle of nowhere. And then you mentioned some of these things, but my background is property management and development, as long with, like, irrigation, and I would hope that you took into consideration the rainwater runoff, and can you use the ponds for your irrigation system instead of using potable water, which would help reduce some of the water usage? And you mentioned the trees and shrubs, but it doesn't say which is which. And a lot of it, I thought you said, was cool season turf, which is just grass. And a lot of it, I thought you said was cool season turf, which is just grass. And we don't really, they don't, we don't need that. We don't need to see that. Prairie grasses, things where you don't have to run the irrigation every day would be something I would take into strong consideration if you were to approve something like this. And then my final comment is, I think this looks awful. I just, I would hate to see it there every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. I was going to say, I thought the buildings looked kind of nice.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Brad Blockett. I live at 457 Reflection Road. And a lot of things have been talked about that I got confused about. Really don't know anything about job creation or whatever, but I have no idea what 11,000, approximately 11,000 year hours in his figure of employment, where does that come from? Let's get down to some understandable language in identifying what kind of employment we're talking about for how long, that sort of thing. She just got done mentioning fire, what happens. It's a lot of electricity, a lot of electrical equipment that could go up and short circuits if it overheats. And I don't know what the fire suppression systems are for a data center. I don't know what kind of chemicals would be used to stuff out an electrical fire, what the hazardous level of those chemicals are, where the runoff would go into those ponds, what kind of response does Apple Valley have for some sort of chemical spill that could be coming from a significant facility of this size? Imagine it has to kind of look like the airport would have to do if an air, a jet lands and crashes on the darmac and they have that runoff going into the ponds. They have to put booms out, they have to do a whole lot of stuff quick before it gets down to the river. I was happy to hear that it's a closed circuit for water, but how do they cool that water down? They can't just keep pumping hot water back into the system and expect to cool anything down. So, yeah, so he did mention the addition of additional water tanks than that aren't shown on the plan there. So how that affects the berm when they try to expand it in that space that I see available for that, I'm not sure how, and that's, that's their problem, not mine. The other thing that he talked about that was confusing in his report, his presentation, was the sound. He had figures for the sound that, and how it was measured into the neighborhood and the building's not even there yet, it's not generating sound. So how do we know how far it'll go over those berms, et cetera? The, the main concern was, so it makes it in his wave of the sound waves reaching out, it's a cumulative effect. So if we're already exceeding on pilot knob, the decibel allowed by the state, now we're going to put a facility that's going to compound the amount of sound that comes from that general area. How does that impact the, the residents? I'm not sure that was, I'm not sure what he was talking about. I'm just saying it was confusing and I would like some clarification on it. And also there was mentioned the gravel. I, I didn't understand what that gravel is all about between, the area between the two buildings. And I never thought about it. Oh, parking or driving on? Well, that wasn't what I was thinking. But it's an impervious, it's a pervious surface. So is that how some of the storm water running off the roofs are going to be treated as, as running into those gravel pits before they go and maybe get down to the ponds? I, I'd like to know more about how the storm water runoff is being handled and brought into those ponds. And if we're having significant more frequent and severe rain events, to what design level is that pond going to be big enough to accommodate that? I know in a recent redevelopment of the Apple Valley Executive Golf Course off of Garden View and 140th, they designed the ponds and then had to go back in and dig them deeper. And now they did some more additional work this winter on that because their calculations were not, ponds were not functioning to what they expected them to. And so, you know, let's get the ponds right. Let's make sure we're working with the Vermillion Watershed District and Soil and Water Conservation District to suggest the right kinds of plants in the landscaping. We'll consult them, they've got some expertise in, in doing that. Mentioned the, the lawn being mowed as inside the facility. Let's put bee friendly lawns and something that doesn't take a lot of maintenance, doesn't need to be a low mo, you know, low mo type of approach. So that just sums it up real quickly. Thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mo Feshami. I was an Apple Valley resident.
Address, please.
2528 220th Street, Farmington. I was an Apple Valley resident and even though I live in Farmington now, I do a lot of my business here. I even have my own parking spot at Menards.
Next to mine.
The, I'm retired now, but I was a enterprise data center architect. I developed their telecom and all the data networking for them for multiple Fortune 500 companies. I never worked for one of the developers, but I know that business from the customer side very well. And that's why I thought it's important for me to come and share some of that experience. Since I live on Farmington, I also am very interested in the data centers that they're planning on building there. And I'm also a member of Responsible Data Center Development. That's a local group that has tried to educate themselves and also share what we have found with other communities. You asked a lot of questions about water. Water is a big concern. 90% of our groundwater in Dakota County of our water comes from ground. But if you look just a few miles down the road with the Meta Data Center, they've designed their cooling such that on an average day, they only use 15,000 gallons of water. Their maximum is 100,000 per day, gallons of water per day. So if you are concerned, you know, if Meta is doing it, I think the other developers should look at that. And if they're preparing a shovel ready space for other customers to come, perhaps they could ask the customers, bring in a cooling system that matches something that Meta is doing. So the water usage does not have to be that much. DNR was mentioned. I have correspondence with DNR, Melissa Collins. She is very, very concerned about the number of data centers and their water usage that is going on. There are roughly about nine data centers that we know about that are in the approval process, and there are three that I've heard through the rumor mill that are being considered for the Dakota County area. So the water is a big concern. There are solutions to them, but they're expensive. So it's a balancing of the environmental impact on our future versus the money that we have to spend in developing more water efficient data centers. You asked about generators. Depending on how much water they use, they would have quite a few generators. The one in Farmington, it depends on the power usage. That's a 708,000 megawatt system that the developer expects to have several hundred generators. If you assume it's 200, that's quite a few, each one with 6,000, roughly 6,000 gallon belly tanks. So that's a lot of diesel fuel sitting there. They get tested regularly, sometimes with load for a period of 20, 30, 40 minutes, depending on the standard operating process of the data center owner. And if they could test them one at a time, that'd be great. But I don't know if they can test them all one at a time. It could be a, you know, end of the month or the end of the week. And every time you change fuel, they have to run again to make sure that everything is regulated. So there is the possibility of the fuel, there is the possibility of noise. The design looks decent enough from the way they've put the buildings together. The generators would be placed most likely in between the buildings. The noise would not be as bad, but as many people said before, if we already are in a busy environment, the cumulative noise is going to be pretty significant. As far as power usage, if we look at the nine that we know about, I would be very much surprised that all nine of them can be accommodated. And those are the ones we know about. There is an article that one of the reporters went and looked at each one and put the power requirement of these data centers on a, on a map. And we'd be glad to share that with you. So talking about that we can supply these powers for all these data centers coming in, it's hard to just, to believe. I'm not saying it's incorrect. There are people that do this every day, but from my electrical engineering background, I find it challenging. Definitely your crew has shown a lot of work. My appreciation for the work you've done and even more so for the questions you're asking, those are very, very important questions. The water, again, we are all in the same aquifer. The two data centers that AURs have been approved for Farmington, they would in the summertime pull more than 3 million gallons a day. Well, that's not just Farmington. You know, you're on the same aquifer. Hampton is on the same aquifer. Lakeville is on the same aquifer. And the water that Farmington drowns, it, it may be within their right to draw, but it impacts you. What you do impacts us. So we're all on the same aquifer. And there needs to be some more thought given to more efficient way. You asked earlier, Madam Chair, that why Minnesota? Minnesota certainly has cooler climates, but it also has sales tax advantage that applies to all the infrastructure, all the software you buy, all the licenses that renew every year. In 2011, when the tax exemption, sales tax exemption went into effect, that was to support Minnesota companies to become more competitive in the digital economy that the country was taking on. In 2011, it was only $5 million in tax returns. In 2024, it was $80 million in tax returns. So it, it is that advantage that is drawing other developers here to develop data centers. Again, we are not against data centers. We think they should be thought through and done in a way that it doesn't impact the quality of life and the environment. When I look at the Meta Data Center plans, their closest building to the property age, and that's the, the substation, is 504 feet. The longest distance to property line is about 1,500 feet. So since they're putting their name on the building and they had to deal with the community, they've done a lot of work to stay away from the edges of the facility, to reduce the noise pollution, to reduce the light pollution. When you have a building that's 70 feet high and there is light in there for security purposes, how much of that is going to impose on the neighboring areas? Noise is not just the noise of generators. There is the low frequency noise from the computers, the storage, the devices that are in the data center. And low frequency noise travels even further and has its own side effects that we can share at some other time. I think I've taken a lot of your time. I appreciate letting you speak even though I'm not from the area, but if there is anything our coalition can do to provide you additional information with references from valid sources, we'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your insight, knowledge. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Eduardo Torrens. I live in 15603 Fairfield Drive. I am located like kitty corner from that property right there. Been an Apple Valley resident for 12 years. And in that location, I've been since they built there, so it's been five years. I wasn't aware of this. I'm not totally against of, you know, development and data centers. My question is like, why that location? Like, I know Minnesota, it's a perfect location for it, but as a resident, you know, from that community, I think the location is not the best for the benefit of the residents. You know, like if I want to take a walk with my kids, that whole area will be like a jail, will be fenced it and close to the public. So like I said, I, I'm not against of the project at all, it's just the location. And that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Johnson. I live at 22280 Bering Avenue, Farmington. I live in Castle Rock, right outside of Farmington. And I did have my career of 32 years of teaching though, in Apple Valley, so I'm very familiar with this community. I'm the president of the Coalition for Responsible Data Center Development. It's a group of ordinary folks that has developed and reached out to many different communities and states. And I testified at the Senate, and I'm just going to give you, two weeks ago, I'll just give you a nutshell of what I said. Don't feel that, Minnesota's in the infancy of the data center world, really. Places like Northern Virginia are saturated. The data centers are now, six largest data center communities now, Atlanta, Georgia, because it's closest, close respectively to DC, that's where they're moving to. Don't think that you're any different than the other communities who've experienced data center growth. There are problems. I appreciate the presentation tonight as well, but that's one side of the story. And I think my challenge to you is to do a little research about the reality that exists in other places. It's very different from the picture that was painted tonight. Let's just leave it at that. And Mike Slavik has said, yes, there are at least 10 of these campuses, mega campuses coming into Dakota County, and lots of problems that are, lots of concerns about that. In addition, the Jordan Vane of the Prairie to Shane Waterway is being tapped on an Elko for bottled water that's being sold in Sam's Club and Walmart and places like that, or not Walmart, but well, in other places. Waterford has a de-watering mine that's a huge mega water user that's in process. And the DNR does tend to look at a lot of these projects in a silo one at a time. The challenge is, the reason I testified at the, at the Senate is because definitely the state needs to get a handle on this. There's very little, if any, regulation on this in Minnesota, which is another reason the data center companies like to come here, as well as the other reasons that were cited tonight. So my challenge, I'm willing to share with you. We have a ton of research that we've done on this that's catalogued. We have a little documentary that one of our members- tonight. So my challenge, I'm willing to share with you, we have a ton of research that we've done on this that's catalogued. We have a little documentary that one of our members did just about the Farmington experience. If, I'll leave my website back on the sign-in. If you're interested in that, I'm willing to share that. And any other, I mean, Farmington's ahead of where you guys are in this whole process. So we've been through, I've seen this going on now for quite a while in Farmington, far more than 100 and whatever number of days, 120 days. But anyway, that's my challenge, is just take a look at the reality that exists in other places, because there's other places that are far ahead of us in Minnesota, and look at the experience in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Martin Matringa. I live at 4760 138th Street West. My concern is, this proposed data center looks like it's going to be right under an approach to two of the runways into Minneapolis-St. Paul. And we've heard that they put out some low frequencies and electromagnetic interference from the servers. We'd like to know if there's any consideration, any studies done that will affect the navigation coming in on these low approaches. These aircraft have very complicated avionics and electronic flight controls that could be affected during these approaches going over the building. You said you've all been in Menards. I've been there, too, and I can read, you can see the people in the airplane, so it's that low.
Good question.
Just wondering if that's been any consideration during the project. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. There was one more person I saw stand up.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Julie Murray. I'm a resident at 4604 138th Street West and have been a resident for 33 years. And I am just a resident, a mother, educator in our district, and I'm just imploring you to do your research. I'd like to hear from other communities that have had data centers, especially in a pretty congested community area. And there hasn't been any discussion on the longevity data regarding health issues, not just water and not just electricity. Although, again, I'm concerned that, I mean, I know when I use my air conditioner in the summer, sometimes my electricity goes out. So I must admit, I've got some concerns about the reports. But again, I just implore you to do your research for the quality of life that Apple Valley has provided for me and for my family. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is William Greasbach. I live on 157th Street, just a little ways away from there. Using the information from the presentation tonight, I just wanted to maybe ask if they could provide some more clarity. They estimated, I think, what, maybe six to eight million gallons a year annually, but a peak of four. So those numbers just don't quite seem to match up. That's like a two-day window at peak draw. And I know a couple of years ago, we had a three-week span of over 100 every day. So those just, those numbers just don't quite seem to match. So I'd hope for a bit more clarity on that one.
Okay. Thank you, William. Anyone else? No one else? Commissioner Scanlon?
Madam Chair, I would recommend that we not close the public hearing tonight and let it carry through so that we can...
That was already my decision.
...the applicant and the city an opportunity to review the large amount of questions that had come up.
Yes. So Alex, as I was going to say, is that I'm going to keep the hearing open until next time, because there'll probably be some more additional questions that arise or information that may arise. And thank you to all the public that came up and asked questions. They will work, the staff will work on those answers, formal answers, and we will present it next time. So that is done with the five, what was it, what were we on? I'm confused.
4B.
4B we were done with. That brings us to... What? Brings us to other business. Tim Benetti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. I just wanted to let you know, your next meeting will be Wednesday, February 19th, also followed by a Wednesday, March 5th meeting. Hopeful to have you here, both of those. Also like to make a very quick or brief announcement that this will be the last meeting of our city planner, Alex Sharp, as he has elected to take another job with another community. We're going to be missing Alex, but it's a great, great adventure for him, and we are going to have a little gathering for him this Friday in our department. Feel free to stop in if you've got time and wish him well. But we hope to, we're currently going out for the other planner positions. We have a planner one and a city planner position now that we're going to be posting for. So hope to have some more news for you in the near future on that as well, or keep you updated. That's all I have for you tonight.
I think actually we should be able to vote on that, whether or not he's...
About what?
I hear no motion, Alex, so you've got to stay.
Thank you.
That's a bummer, but I'm happy for you, Alex. We will miss you dearly. You've done a great job over the years that I've known you and others have known you. So good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hey, we get that from Commissioner Scanlon and seconded by Commissioner Mahalwild. Everybody in favor, say yay.
Yay.
This meeting is adjourned.
[music]